Got your glasses on?
Oh, yeah, ugh.
You know, keep going because there's, so he asks people to come. You better be aware of that, Rocky. Well, you need to know.
Meeting order, please. Would you please call the roll?
Vice Chairperson Brown.
Here.
Chairperson Hoag.
Here.
Board Member Morrison.
Here.
Board Member Randalls.
Present.
Board Member Raymond.
Here.
Good evening, Angela. Okay, first item is new business to approve the minutes from a community redevelopment agency board meeting on September 19th, 2017. Motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, Randall speaking. I was present at that meeting back in September the 19th and I reviewed them in it pretty well in detail and brief reviews what we accomplished at that meeting.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of 2017, September 19th. Call the roll, please.
Vice Chairperson Brown.
Four.
Chairperson Hoag.
Four.
Board Member Morrison.
Here, four.
Board Member Randalls.
Four.
Board Member Raymond.
Four.
Item number two is review and provide feedback on draft community redevelopment agency CRA financial incentive guide. Will you take the lead on this, Mr. Green?
I'll try to be brief. With staff of the CRA has made a number of recommendations for the board's consideration, primarily dealing with CRA incentives for property redevelopment, paint up, fix up, facade grants, sign grants, and those kinds of things that would continue to enhance the properties in the city of Cape Canaveral that are located within the CRA area, which comprises about 56 percent of the limits or the acreage of the city of Cape Canaveral. Additionally, they are assistance in nature to help the property owner or the business owner to make the desired improvements, to create additional value to both the property owner and the business owner as well as to the community and the CRA. And again, primarily their paint up, fix up programs, beautification grants, although all of the various programs and the dollar amounts are matching so that the individual applicant would be providing for the first dollar coverage, if you will, and once the improvements are made, then the CRA would, you know, going through the approval process, grant the funding up to the maximum amount. And so, matching facade and property improvement grant as an example, 50 percent reimbursement with a maximum reimbursement of up to $10,000. And eligibility, one grant award for one category for a period of five years. Another example would be the multifamily residential or residential neighborhood improvement grant. Again, this is 50 percent, a maximum reimbursable of up to $5,000. And again, the one in five years, exterior enhancements and renovation, landscaping, lighting. Also, another program is revitalization grants, paint voucher grants, in those cases, up to $5,000 reimbursement for painting, rehab redevelopment, repurposing of existing buildings. A large grant program that would provide up to $25,000 again to revitalize or help revitalize a property, bring them into code compliance and the like. And again, it varies by the particular area and what we would do is we would go through the budgeting process, set aside, as an example, up to $50,000 per year in grant funds matching so that would leverage at least $100,000 worth of improvements within the city, give or take depending, again, on the situation. And as you look through the programs, we've tried to make them in package format so that if someone is interested in a facade, as an example, then they would just pick up the facade packet from staff. The approving entity would be the Development Review Committee to ensure code compliance in all respects and it would be handled in that fashion with a review, a point system, meeting the requirements and having to achieve a certain amount of positive points in order to be funded, subject to fund availability. But it would ensure continued improvement in the city of Cape Canaveral, I think, as an overall basis, since the CRA was initially approved by the city council and the redevelopment plan and the agreement with Brevard County, the CRA has increased in value by slightly over $100 million. And I think we'll, we'll get a good handle for sure on how that, how much more that may change for the upcoming fiscal year 18, 19. But it's an additional assist to owners in the city or properties in the city to further enhance and make the improvements to make us a more desirable community and, again, to be code compliant and ensure in all respects that we continue to successfully improve the city of Cape Canaveral. I'll try to answer any questions the council might have. I know that's very quick. We will be glad to try.
I noticed that some of the CRA grants that are out there, Anthony, you might know about some of these with like COCO, they impose a lien for the grant, or I don't see that in our, but it's a guaranteed payback type.
Yeah, and the reason we've chose not to go through the lien process due to expense and the additional difficulty and what we're saying is these are matching grants that are made after the improvements are paid for.
I like this.
Yeah, I think it's a little cleaner because leaning is a whole nother kettle of fish often.
Right, right.
And again, for these kinds of dollar amounts, it's not significant and this way the city and the CRA are secure in knowing that those improvements that would be funded have been made and satisfying all the check boxes, if you will, that no other liens have been placed on the property. We would certainly do that, a check as part of our due diligence.
I think it's good. I like this better than what I've seen on the street out there. I know there's other ones that lien your property.
It's not required. Yeah, it's not, I mean, it's not required that the CRA take back a lien in exchange for the grant funds. Some CRAs do do that. You know, it's really the discretion of the CRA board whether you want to do the lien process. The bottom line is though, it's, they're not going to get the funding unless they complete the work, is my understanding.
That is absolutely correct, yes.
So, the lien really helps with maintenance of the improvements or the work that was done with the CRA funds. So, it's kind of a maintenance security for a period of time. That's what, that's what some CRAs do by imposing the lien.
Yeah, I like this process better. I think it's more, it's less, it seems like it's less of a hassle, plus it, I think it benefits the citizen better than the other way around. This one does. I like this.
Yes, Mr. Chair, just speaking for it, I think when we started this back in the year 2012, most of us didn't know what a CRA was or the real benefits. And even expressing it to some of the businesses now about it, they think, well, it's additional taxes. It really isn't additional taxes. Their base year, whatever their taxes was there, the amount of money as their property value goes up, comes to us to give back to them. So, as the things improve and the value of the property goes up, but it's not an additional tax in any way, shape, or form.
You're explaining a CRA tax.
Yes.
Okay, I don't think anybody understands what you, only the people that know what you're talking about.
Okay.
You're explaining CRA taxing.
Yes, that's important to the people.
Well, a lot of people don't understand it because I was at a meeting last week and two out of about 15 knew what a CRA tax was.
Yeah.
The people out there.
The simplest way to look at it is that historically, the city has been a donor to Brevard County government and through the CRA, we are able to recapture within the CRA area, the additional increment in property tax value gain and expend that within the CRA area and city of Cape Canaveral rather than somewhere else in unincorporated Brevard County.
I have to point out that indeed, it's been a real discussion between the county and the city because, in essence, this is a county tax that we're retaining in our city, a portion of it.
Yes.
And they have, I won't say heartburn, but like any of us, any business, they say, I would like to get all the money that's coming to me, but under the Florida statutes, this is a provision.
We did that for a long time and never got anything back.
Okay, what has the city done to let some of these blighted property owners know that this grant is available?
It's certainly, historically, the city has used it primarily for infrastructure improvements, Mike, and as an example, what we'll be talking about later is the Cape Center and the multi-generational facility are both CRA eligible under our redevelopment plan. But I think we will amp up the information on the program once we have the incentive program in place, subject to the board approval. I think the reasonable answer to it is, is that, you know, and I hate to harp this way, but we're just a handful of staff doing the work of many and there are limitations as to what we can do. And the overall condition of the city's infrastructure has been such over the years, now I'll be the one to say this and I feel strongly, it has been horrifically neglected for a number of years and that's why we're expending considerable amount of money now in the sewer and stormwater area, infrastructure in general, streetscapes and roads. And part of what we'll be funding on a going forward basis is a program that will basically self-fund all of the streets in the city, repave, reservice, solve the problems in a priority basis, subject to city council approval and a budget, so that we don't, aren't guilty of kicking the can down the road. We've done similar things as the city already with renewal and replacement for vehicles, equipment, roofs, air conditioning units, et cetera, and so that there isn't that big gulp and surprise when something fails or something needs to be fixed. Now, having said that, there are still millions and millions of dollars worth of infrastructure improvements needed in Cape Canaveral and we have several million dollars worth under construction now from the city perspective. And again, the CRA redevelopment plan is such that once we resolve the agreement, interlocal agreement issue with the county, the CRA and the county then will be on the same page. As you recall, during the legislative session in the last couple of years, there's just been a tremendous angst politically by the county commissioners, legislators and everything trying to eliminate and abolish CRAs because they can do a better job from Tallahassee than we can on Main Street or Polk Avenue, as the saying might go. And so, all it is, is a self-help mechanism funded out of the city increment and the county increment.
Mr. Chair, if I could ask, of course, the city managers to be sure, I know we only dedicate a half hour to this meeting, so I'll try to be brief. Do I understand then that the action that you are asking us to review these possible alternatives like pre-paint and things like that and provide the feedback to the CRA people?
Yes, and in that case, as the CRA board, and me as a registered agent, David as the CRA director, and then at our, we have, would have an upcoming meeting that would be involved with, primarily timed with the budgeting process, so that then we could have the programs ready to go based upon the feedback and the direction from this board and move forward with the CRA segment of the city budget overall and have the, hopefully the agreement with the county behind us. And so, we'll be in very much of an additional go position. I think the board, as well as the, again, I know we're wearing all kinds of hats these days, but from the board perspective and the city council perspective, we did an excellent job in timing the low point of property values. So, the CRA has performed rather well, to say the least, because we absolutely hit the low point in 2012 on the property values as a result of the Great Recession.
If that's true, Mr. Chair, if there's no additional discussion.
Angela, do you have something you want to?
No, nothing.
Mr. Morrison?
Thank you, and I just want to thank staff. David, I think you worked hard on this for putting this together and I also appreciate you taking the time to run it through the board so to give some feedback. I'm looking forward to see what this evolves into. One of my early concerns is, you know, CRAs are certainly controversial if you keep up with state politics and county, as some of our council members up here have mentioned. And the, if the money's going to be spent, one of the things that I wanted to see was, can we somehow equally distribute it to the private sector as well? And the staff put this together in an effort to make that happen, so thank you. And it is for the entire CRA district, so I like the fairness of it. This is my feedback. I think it's balanced. It's not saying one particular section within the CRA. One of the questions I have is, is there a total cap on the entire program? Because I could certainly see how this might be an issue from a limit standpoint.
I think initially where I would see is, is I would like to start out perhaps the next fiscal year, and I have to stop and think, which one are we in, which one are we about to go in? But for the 18, 19 fiscal year, we're right now thinking $50,000 set aside for the program. And then we'll see how the demand or need is. We'll have contingency dollars that the board could work with staff on to enhance those if we see more folks that want to move forward and businesses with that. And so, kind of a, I don't want to say baby steps because I think, again, with our resources and needs, we're trying to balance all that. So, the short answer is, let's, I'm thinking $50,000 to start and if we hopefully have a serious run on that, then we can appropriate and move some more dollars in to meet the additional demand. And again, from the overall point of view, we've tried to make it as just as simple as possible and we can't unfortunately make it self-administering, but as you will see a little bit later through our negotiations with the county on the interlocal agreement, there's a couple of items that we are recommending to this board to agree to. And later in the city council meeting, we'll be doing much of the same thing on holding the administrative expenses to 5 percent or less, which were well within those ranges, and a few other items. So, the short answer is, yes, we can move more money in if and when needed.
Okay, thank you. My last question is, is there a minimum? Because from, I'm being sensitive to staff, if there, if there isn't and someone says, hey, I spend $5 on a quart of paint, right? I want my $5 matching grant. I'm not trying to make light of that. I think there's certainly value there, but you're going to fill out, I think, the same amount of paperwork for that grant and I'm trying to be.
Yes, indeed.
Conscious of what staff has to go through.
Yeah, we hadn't really established a minimum viewpoint. What I would like to suggest is, let's just see if that actually happens. And then, you know, once, once we see how the community handles its side of the bargain, then, then we can go from there. But I think we envision plenty of need for, in the, you know, for many of us, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5,000 or 10,000 is a lot of money.
Okay.
And so, I think let's, may I suggest, let's play it as it comes and if we need to have some sort of minimum amount, we can. But the way, the way we envision it working, it would be, hopefully could match up, we do have some time periods all the way around, but if we could catch a scheduled DRC meeting and move some of these kinds of projects through at the same time, that would, that would be about as efficient as and as effective as we could be to hold the overall cost down. Thank you.
Everybody through? No more questions?
If there's no more discussion, Mr. Chair, I would recommend that we take the following action, that's review, to see if we have any feedback on this and send it on up to the CRA financial incentives guide. It may get some changes, there'll probably be some public input in it, but I certainly speak in favor of adopting this.
I second that motion.
Hello? Everybody ready to go? Call it out, please. Call the roll.
Vice Chairperson Brown.
Four.
Chairperson Hoag.
Four.
Board Member Morrison.
Four.
Board Member Randalls.
For the motion.
Board Member Raymond.
Four.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number three and it's approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida and city of Cape Canaveral Community Redevelopment Agency in Brevard County, Florida.
Would you like me to be brief? Yeah, I'll do my best to be brief, although sometimes I don't do a particularly good job at it. Kind of the highlights, very simply, as an example, during the life period of the CRA, we have captured $793,602 of money that would normally have been paid over to Brevard County that now has been made available over the years into our CRA. The first recommendation as part of the agreement is that when we negotiated the agreement with Brevard County, they agreed to pay their then mileage rate into the CRA and subsequently they've had heartburn over that because actually the city's tax rate is lower than Brevard County's tax rate. So, the county found itself in a position of contributing more county tax dollars into the CRA than the city itself was. And so, as part of the animosity or issues of concern from the county's perspective, on behalf of the city, we indicated a willingness to present to this board the idea that the city and the county would pay into the CRA, the TIF payment, at the lowest possible rate. So, if the county's rate happened to be lower than the city, then that would be the rate that applies, or if the city's rate's lower, then that would be what the county would have to pay into the CRA. And so, that, that takes away a point of contention between us. Additionally, the county has historically, as we know and as they admit, they've kicked a number of cans down the road over the years, transportation and road improvements, utility system improvements, stormwater improvements, and many, many others, where this city has been much more responsive and trying to deal with the issues and solve them going forward. So, as an accommodation to the county viewpoint, we're recommending to the board that the CRA was approved through the year 2042 and in this particular instance, we are willing to present to the board a reduction of two years so that the CRA would carry from, essentially from 2012 to 2040. And the thinking behind that is very simply, we've been very ambitious, forward-thinking, forward-acting, and we would think that we could make substantial improvements in the city during that time period. And so, we don't see that as being a problem. Additionally, the county's perspective, and I don't know how in the world they got themselves wrapped around this axle, as did the legislature and others, is a feeling that the cities could possibly cause indebtedness to be the responsibility of the county instead of the city CRA. And what doesn't seem to make any sense is no lending entity, whether they be bonds or a bank, no. or a bank note or something, is going to loan money with a maturity date beyond the date of the, the program or the district itself. And so we had no difficulty agreeing with that, is, nor, you couldn't do it, you shouldn't be able to do it, and we wouldn't do it. And so that handles that. As far as the CRA administrative expenses the county wanted, and this, I think, is their standard position with others, is that to hold the administrative costs at 5%, and ours are way below 5% overall, and we would envision on an ongoing basis that that would continue to be the case. From there, the other thing that was of concern is the budgeting process and what information we prepare and present an annual report to the county as part of the requirements, provided information on our website, submitted to the state, and in a number of other entities. It's audited as part of our, our audit. So in that sense, we're, we're fully compliant, as disclosed in our comprehensive annual financial report, and I know I'm talking too much, apparently, Mayor, or CRA Board Chair. But having said that, we've agreed to agree that we'd ask our auditors to do more detail than, treat the CRAs somewhat differently than they're actually required to by law. And if County Commissioner in this district, too, would ask for a meeting concerning the audit, that we would make ourselves available to meet with him or her. And those are the sum total of, of what we spent the last several months, almost frankly a year, working with the county attorney and the county manager and staff of the county to, to move this forward. We wholeheartedly recommend it to the city council. If this is what it takes to improve the relationship with Brevard County and, and help take city CRAs out of the county commission's gun sights, then I think we've done a great job for the CRA and for the residents and businesses of Cape Canaveral.
Sorry.
You're good. Board? Angela? Nothing? Mr. Randles?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I understand the reasoning from Brevard County, because just this period of years that we've had this, the property value has increased $101 million in our little community that is applying to this. So there's substantial money going to be coming back that we're withholding from the county, so I can understand them saying, we want to cancel all this. If, if we can resolve this with the county, incidentally, I think we're the first city to do this, aren't we?
I think so.
We're, we're among the earlier ones, they've, I think, they may have reached something with Satellite Beach, I think City of Melbourne, I'm not sure about Rockledge, but, but I think we're probably early mid, mid.
Yeah. If, if we can reach an agreement on this, it's the five items that you've pointed out here, reducing it from the year 2040 to 20, oh, I'm sorry, from 2042 to 2040, and for us not to make any expenditures that will obligate beyond that period is reasonable. And, and I can understand why the county is a little hesitant to saying this, if they're willing to accept this, I'll wait until we, everybody gets to speak, but I, I see this being a good thing for our community.
We were one of the first ones, I think, to move, move off of the, off of the set rate to negotiate that point with them. The other thing we did, we, we were one of the first ones to move our sunset date back. That was done long before some of the other counties, we made that mention, and I think it got the other counties, or the other cities, I mean, not the counties, other cities, thinking. Because I was at a mayor's meeting where they, they were adamant about fighting them all the way, you know, go down in flames, what are you going to go down in flames with them? But I think negotiating with them was a smart thing on our part to start off with.
All cities and counties want to try to get every possible cent they can for their residents.
Well, we, we owe a lot of credit to this, to the county manager's office and his upper staff and the county attorney, which at the time was Scott Knox, and we finished up with the new attorney. But I think that we kept them as congenial as possibly in spite of some philosophical differences.
Right. You finished, Rocky?
Yes, I'll yield to somebody else.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes, I think I just have one thing in the inter-local agreement in Section 8 under annual audit, report, and meeting. The last sentence says that, you know, this is where they call that, the meeting, that the commissioner within that district, which we, is now is Commissioner Barfield, and open seat, to be determined, but it says that the city or chairperson of the CRA governing body shall meet.
Uh-uh, no, it says the city manager of the city or chairperson of the CRA governing body. And in each case, I'm, of course, I wear the city manager hat, and when I'm functioning as a CRA, I'm automatically the registered agent. And so that, that's how, how it works, and the, the intent there is, if they want, I mean, they're getting a certified audit in all respects, they get our comprehensive annual financial report of the CRA, because it's included in the city's comprehensive annual financial report. And so I don't, it's just kind of odd that they would do that. The, the other thing that I will just say by way of information is, there, there's a lot of emphasis on, on whether or not it should be a absolute performance audit in all respects, and how efficiently and effectively the programs were provided, and those sorts of things. And we feel that this was sufficient to provide the security based upon the independent audit report, which you all get every year, that looks over all the staff does and, and/or doesn't do. And so we thought that should be sufficient, and, and the county manager's office and attorney tended to agree with that.
In, in the event that that bizarre scenario happens, where the county commissioner, a legislator of that body, wants to meet, I would, I would be in favor of the city, the city manager of the city and, and equal party, in this case, it would be whoever the CRA chair would join you-
Yes.
-in that meeting, so that we have-
Absolutely.
-kind of a balance in that room to represent the board of the CRA. That's the only thing that I saw. And if, and/or can be changed to an and, and if that's not significant, I would make a motion to add that in after discussion has finished.
May, let's do this. We hear you, and that's the way it'll be implemented. I'm a little bit reluctant to, to make the change, because we don't want to cause delay. This has been holding us up for quite some time on some additional programs and activities that we would bring to the board. So, so to deal with your concern, the CRA board, registered agent, and community development director clearly understands that Board Member Morrison wants to be sure that the board chair and the city manager attend the meeting.
You think that it would delay this meeting, that the county would say-
To be blunt, I think that's-
Well, let me finish if you don't mind.
Okay.
That they would delay because one of these elected bodies would want to meet with a, a counter-elected body?
No, that, no, you're not listening. The point I'm trying to make is, we're going to meet with them if they request. I'm saying I would rather us not change the agreement, because the understanding in the minds, and we don't want to necessarily have to go back through additional meetings with the county. Your point is clear, and I'm going to do what this board tells me to do.
I understand where he's coming from, but this has to all go back to them again, and it's going to delay the, delay the thing.
Might, yeah, it might.
This would have to go back for them to review.
And I don't think it's a significant point.
It's really not.
I mean, I work for you all.
Yep. We're covered, we've been there before, it's been covered before. It's not our first rodeo. You've had, you've had five or six years there, so there's no problem with it, believe it.
Yep, I just want somebody that represents the people to be in those meetings, there's a lot of skepticism with CRAs, and I want one of these five that the people elected to be a part of that meeting, especially if it's closed.
It'll happen, it'll happen, it'll happen.
If, if we say it'll happen, then we will change the word and-
This has to go back to them again, now you're-
Well, then maybe they should have involved us in the conversation sooner.
It never has had a, been a, it hasn't been a problem in five years.
I, I don't think the, the folks at the county are going to have a problem with one of these fine people here being a part of that.
No, they won't, they won't. I've been in a lot of, not a lot, but I've been in a lot of meetings with the city official, or the county officials, school board people. We are, we're always open arms welcome, there's no problem.
Just, just a question to the attorney.
There's been stuff that don't, that's-
Are we discussing an item that doesn't have a second yet?
Yeah.
Angela's second.
You know-
I thought-
I think we're still in discussion.
Yeah, we're, we're in discussion, but-
You know, rather than spend a bunch of useless time on this, we'll just go ahead, and if it causes a delay, it causes a delay, and that will upset some other things.
We've been, we've been two, we've been two years trying to get this satisfied, and we're to the point where we've got the county under our arms, and we're holding hands, and I don't want to see it delayed. I want to see it move on.
Well, I guess my question, does the amendment have a second?
No, there's-
We haven't even made the-
You've had it, no, there's been no, there's been no motion towards the amendment. I, I don't see any problem with the way it's written, there's been no problem for five years, and if need be, whoever, me or whoever's sitting in this chair will attend, if need be. But we don't, we don't have that necessity, we've never had that necessity yet. If we feel like there'll be a problem, one of us will be there.
Then, Mr. Chair-
We're always welcome.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve inter, inter-local agreement.
It's already been motioned, it's second.
Randles would second that motion.
Okay. We're just going to call the roll, please.
Chairperson Brown?
Four.
Chairperson Hoag?
Four.
Board Member Morrison?
Against.
Board Member Randles?
For the motion.
Board Member Raymond?
Four.
Okay, we're into our other meeting time, so let's take two minutes or so.
Two minutes.
Well, Mia has to reorganize, so. Is that long enough for you, Mia?
Cheers.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I would envision however they do the voting, I mean, you know, it's the chair.
You're a good problem, what did you want? Did you all say?
Look at that, David, look at that. You've got four people.
I knew it.
Something that's important to the city.
Please get a card out in the back lobby and fill it out and give it to the clerk on the end, please.
No, I didn't.
We're going to start here in just a minute.
Anthony's talking to him.
The council meeting, the order for, whoops, I got the wrong, the June 19th. I have, oh, June on top of that one yet. Mr. Morrison, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, everybody, if you want to speak on any items. Please get a card out in the back lobby and fill it out and give it to the clerk on the end, please.
No, I didn't.
We're going to start here in just a minute.
Anthony's talking to him.
The council meeting, the order for, whoops, I got the wrong, the June up there. June 19th. I have, oh, June on top of that one yet. Mr. Morrison, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening, everybody.
Thank you, Rocky.
Please call the roll, Mia.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Here.
Mayor Hoag?
Here.
Councilmember Morrison?
Here.
Councilmember Randall's?
Present.
Councilmember Raymond?
Here.
Okay, we're going to, we have one card for public participation. And that is Mr. Rayo.
Thank all of you. Appreciate you hearing me tonight. I want to address the, actually, the particular part of the subdivision law that has to do with pre-existing grandfather, already developed property within the city. And, you know, I'm not a, a big time developer. I don't come in and out of property, in and out of the city flipping prop, flipping property just for profit. You know, I'm a city taxpayer. I get, I pay over $30,000 in county taxes for property in this city. I'm a consumer of city services, just like all of yourself. I do have a residence here. And I've even cooperated with the city on many, on projects that have interfaced and boarded up into my property within the city. And that came out very ni, very nicely. When, when we were going with the townhomes on Jefferson and we were going to split that up, as we looked in Dave Dickey, you know, we looked with, had all the property and coordinated with him. We looked at a lot of property that had been, I'm not going to say illegally split, but city bypassed and, and they didn't do proper plating for the city. So, you know, I did go through the city and I did go through the processes, but it is a very complicated law when you take basically setting up a subdivision where you're doing streets and drainage and all of those things and then applying it to a pre-existing townhomes, okay? And what I'm talking about, we have three townhomes. They were built, city permitted as townhomes, they were CO'd as townhomes, went through all of the, all of the verification with a state certified official that they were townhomes. And, you know, I just, you know, I've been working with Dave Dickey and the city attorney on all of this. And I believe we're, you know, we're at the end of this and I appreciate Dave, you know, coming to a, you know, coming to a resolve how we're going to get this, you know, situated out. But it is to the, to just a citizen, a person of the city reading through the law, you know, I don't have, you know, these big staffs and, and attorney staffs and everything else. I rely on the city or I rely on my own experience on reading through this law. And it really doesn't address pre-existing now grandfather townhomes such as mine. Okay, so I, I want to do the right thing. I sorted out here. I want to finish it up. You know, it's been, you know, well over a year, but I think we're at the end of an answer. I just want to thank the city for all your time. I know you've spent a lot of time on this one and I believe we're, we're at the end of it after I do that plat submission, okay? All right, just a special thanks to y'all. I love this city and I like what y'all do all the time. And I will do another renovation here one of these days. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rayo. Council, I'm going to, I'm going to speak to y'all for a minute. I got one item I do want to talk to you about and that is what Mr. Rayo had just went through. He has an item on the agenda here for discussion. And I would like to not have this item discussed tonight. This item is an item that has to be taken care of in other fashions. And this would be a quasi judicial matter before this board. And this board cannot hear a quasi judicial matter without it being advertised. And this has never advertised as an item to be discussed at this board. And as, as, and I'm, I'm just going to ask you that we do not hear this tonight. It's a, it's a, an item that if we do get involved in this, we're going to be in some deep water with, with statutes and I don't want to go there. So I'm asking for consensus. We can do it by roll call or just by a raise of hands. Which would you prefer? Anthony, would you?
A roll call.
Roll call?
Roll call, everybody. I also want to just.
I would like to, I'm, I'm getting to that point. I'm going to, I'm going to, Mr. Garganese, I've had, met with Mr. Garganese for a couple hours on this. And I want to let him explain to you what I, what I feel. Thank you.
Council, just with respect to this, this agenda, as it's presented and the wordsmithing in this agenda item, in my, in my opinion, the suggestion is, whether it's in, you know, the suggestion in the agenda item that the council consider waiving subdivision regulations and a lot split, this council doesn't have the authority to do that. State law is pretty, is very clear. With this particular request, this individual wants to take one parcel of land and subdivide it into three individually owned lots. State law, the minimum requirements require a plat, not a lot split resolution. The council can't waive the minimum requirements under Florida law regarding plating. That's the law. So to suggest that the council has an ability to waive is not legally correct. I would advise you not to even take up that particular issue. Now, if there are other issues, of course, I mean, you all free to discuss whatever you want to discuss. But that issue as presented, my advice to you is, I would strongly urge you not to consider waiving the minimum requirements under state law regarding the plating of land. And I think that's the basis for the mayor wanting to pull that item from the agenda.
I would just, Mr. Rayo, I don't know where you. Mr. Rayo, I would, I would dearly love to see this get ended. I know I've spoken to you in, in good faith and everything. I would like, I'm going to ask you if you would get with Mr. Dickey and get this ironed out because this issue, it does say what you say, but it only says what it intent is after the split and the plating is, is, is over with. Then the council approves it. But please get with Mr. Dickey and we'll get this put to, we'll get it ended real quick for you. It will be expedited, believe me. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Mayor, I've, and I just, just for the, just to put on the record, what I, Mr. Rayo and I spoke before the meeting and we will do everything we can to expedite this process to get it done.
Thank you.
And all behind us so Jim can move forward and do what he wants to do and be free of all of this.
But let me add some confusion because that's what I apparently do best. Consistent with law and code.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm glad, I'm behind you, Mr. Rayo, but we have to do it legally and I don't want to get the council into a, into a statute that we don't need to be into because that's, it gets quasi and it's never been advertised. We can't discuss things like that tonight. I'd like to get a roll call, please, on it to get a motion first to pull it from the agenda?
I put this on the agenda and you actually, that's all it was, was a discussion. So you answered the question. If you notice in the summary, it says, do we have the ability to do so? So thank you for clarifying it and thank you staff for working hard. One thing we all have in common is we all want this behind us. They're beautiful properties that he's invested in. Thank you for making our community beautiful. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw this item from the agenda. Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Morrison and a second by Councilman Mayor Pro Tem Brown. I'm sorry. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Randall's?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Thank you, everybody, for understanding. I just, thanks. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Our public participation is over with. I'm sorry. No more public cards. We'll move on to our consent agenda. We have approval for six items on the consent agenda. Anybody wish to pull anything for discussion? Hearing none, I'll move for a motion.
Okay, if there is no request to withdraw any, Mr. Chair, I would move for approval of the six consent items on the agenda of June the 19th, 2018.
I second it.
Hey, we have a motion by Member Randall's and a second by, it's Angela down on the end. Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Randall's?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Thank you, everybody, for understanding. I just, thanks. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Our public participation is over with. I'm sorry. No more public cards. We'll move on to our consent agenda. We have approval for six items on the consent agenda. Anybody wish to pull anything for discussion? Hearing none, I'll move for a motion.
Okay, if there is no request to withdraw any, Mr. Chair, I would move for approval of the six consent items on the agenda of June the 19th, 2018.
I second it.
Hey, we have a motion by Member Randall's and a second by, it's Angela down on the end. Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Randall's?
For the motion.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Public hearings is ordinance number 04-2018, ordinance of the City Council of the City Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, providing for the location of pharmacies and medical marijuana treatment centers. Mr. Garganese.
Ordnance number 04-2018, ordinance of the City Council of the City Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, providing for the location of pharmacies and medical marijuana treatment center, dispensing facilities within the city, providing for the repeal prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, severability and an effective date. This is the final reading and public hearing for this agenda item. Actually, this is the third time that the council's considered this ordinance. So this will be the last time. It is ready, it's ready for adoption. There haven't been any changes to this ordinance since the second reading we had some time ago. Here.
Thank you. Council, I think we beat this dog to death. But anybody have anything they want to add?
I understand.
Just have a general comment. Looking forward to getting this one put behind us as well. Third time's a charm. And I am, just one comment and a big observation is that I've made my point clear that access to medical marijuana and pharmacies is important. I think this is a victory for our community. And when we, when we bring these types of opportunities forward, I would like to see these as a discussion item if possible. I know that we may not be able to. And I think that that's starting with the right foot forward because looking back, hindsight and really thinking on this, I think we could have allowed some of the things that I was hoping for, for those property owners south of the economic overlay district on the west side of A1A. Moving forward, we've made our points clear here. I just hope to see that as a lesson learned. And I specifically say that because this is something that I overconfidently brought to you. I knew that the voters really wanted it and I felt like we were going to be able to get it through. One of the first things that I brought that I'd like to see pushed through and it gets to me, ads have been ran, money has been spent, it's already through P and Z board and now it's, you know, stamp it and I want to push this through. So, but sending it back can be expensive and I think we will have opportunities in those areas. And for those reasons, just want to let public, put it on public record that starting with the right foot forward to include all properties on A1A is where I stand on this, but it's not going to get in between giving the people of this community access. So thank you.
Anybody else? We're going to open this up to the public if you want to talk on this issue. Everybody understand what we're doing? We're going to close public. We'll come to the council again for a motion.
Make a motion that we accept ordinance 04-2018 as written.
I second it.
Hey, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Brown and a second by Mr. Raymond. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Randall's?
For the motion.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Item number eight is evaluation of ratified composite city manager's evaluation. You know, I've had the evaluation for probably two months to go through and I see all of them have been returned. And bring it up to you guys, what you want to talk about. Mr. Green's employment contracts cause, cause for a evaluation each year and the incentives of his salary. What you people feel like you want to go up to, normally 3% is the, the salary, but you can name what you want. Based on your thinking, your evaluation, whatever you feel. I would like to mention last year, Mr. Green refused to take his salary, just for the public to let you know what kind of man I have sitting next to me over here. And he took his $5,000 raise and give it to all of the employees. Gave each employee in this city a $100 bill. And I think that was very, very, very far out from what I've ever seen in dealing with cities. So he's here tonight. I don't know what his intent is tonight, but I just want to let you know what he done with his salary last year. So.
I'd like to say something. I went to many of the city employees and one of the questions I asked them is, are you happy working for the City of Cape Canaveral? I also toured the sewer system that we have. Congratulations to our wonderful public staff. I don't think that you get the credit that you deserve. And I was able to get a tour and I actually understood it. It was really explained to me very basically. I invite anyone in the city to go ahead and educate yourself the way that I have. And, but the question I asked every single person working there, down at Public Works, are you happy working for the City of Cape Canaveral? And I had an outstanding yes, I am. And they went through and expounded upon that. And I think that's a very important point. And I hope that the residents can be as happy and optimistic for our future as our staff. Thank you.
Well, I was, I, I can't say enough about it. I just, every time I talk about it, I get choked because I never seen anybody do that before. I've, I've known all the city managers and all the years I've been involved, I never heard of such a thing, but he did that. I just wanted the people to know that. He kind of gets a little grumpy, but he has got a good heart.
Do I understand correctly that he also did that with a Christmas bonus or some other?
We give a $25 bonus.
That when he received his Christmas bonus, he gave it to all of the staff. He divided it. And I think that really tells you something about this man's character and how he feels about the people working for him. I wish I had been treated like that when I worked at the university. Thank you.
Yeah, see, everybody's busy with their pencils over here, so somebody needs to just speak up and say what they want to say. And if you feel like you want to up it, you, you up it and we'll talk about it however you, you guys want to do.
Well, firstly, it's kind of a two-part question. Don't we first need to complete and ratify the composition of the evaluation?
Right, right. Well, we know, we know what it is and we're going to make all that public, but I know you all are busy figuring. I just want you to be ready.
Well, for the first part of it, it says city council members are requested to ratify the composite evaluation. And for the benefit of the public, we, each city council member had probably 30 questions that we evaluate on from one through five. One is marginal and on down and five being the highest. And all these together, and I'm reading something, I don't know if I have a paper clip or not, but the total score on this, on all these initiative, adaptability, humor, ethical standards, things like that, came to, I'm looking now, it looks like it was 4.88. Am I right?
9.4.
His whole section was 4.94 overall. The whole review averaged out 4.94 out of 5.
Out of 5. I've never seen anybody get a 5 in everything by everybody, but it was very high. I'm sorry, it is 4.94 for section three. And it looks like they're all up in the, everybody.
His evaluation for his job performance, basically, that covers quite a bit, was 4.90. His skills and traits come in at 4.93 and his quality of municipal leadership come in at 4.99.
Thank him, Mayor.
And gave him an average of 4.94. So that is pretty high. And I, I'm proud of our city manager. I've worked with all of them. I've known every one of them and he has been, I think, the best for this city. And I will speak in favor of him and if he's a bad boy, I let him know he's a bad boy. So, but right now, I'm, I'm telling you, we got the best in, in Brevard County and we got the best one in the state of Florida that I can meet. And I go to a lot of places and I see a lot of them. I, I'm proud of our city manager. And I think he can be proud of a 4.94 because that is awful high out of 5. Stop to think about that. So we, we all gave him fair marks. He had, he had some marks that, you know, I, I don't want to question anybody's thinking of why, but I, I know there's some limits in his capabilities, so he didn't score well in public participation. He, he is a Vietnam veteran and he has some war wounds that he's still suffering from. So I, I know why he wasn't there and I don't bang him for that, but I didn't give him a 5. I gave him a 4.5, I think it was, or some 4 or whatever. But anyway, those are, those are the low marks that he gets is basically for that type of stuff. But his leadership and his skills, I mean, come on, 4.93? Wow, that's pretty high out of 5. So he's well versed in what he does and I think he's leading the city in the right direction. There is a lot of things that he does that I question and when I leave his office, I'm patting him on the back. So I, I would like to go ahead and finish this. Rocky, if you guys, anything, anybody wants to say, chime in because that's what you're here for. You're here to.
Not unless you getting ready for an initial motion of him.
No, no, I just want to know if anybody else has anything they want to say.
Yeah, I have a comment on the, the evaluation. I've done evaluations and I've been evaluated. I think we've all been a part on both sides of the fence there. And I found it just a question and a bit bizarre that the, the city manager fills out his own evaluation before distributing, distributing it to the council. I didn't know what the reasoning was before that. And the reason why I ask is because I saw that there were, and I encourage everyone to read the evaluation. This, we spent a lot of time on it and I certainly did. And you can see exactly how I feel. And he did, he did very well overall. And so I'm not going to belabor, you know, my thoughts on it, but there were other, especially historically, if you go back to 2014 and read all the evaluations, points to where they tend to agree with your opinion of yourself. And I just thought that was weird that you would evaluate yourself before you would distribute it to the people. I, I like the idea that you evaluate yourself. I just, it's almost a bit of spoon feeding.
I'll be glad to explain that. That was not my idea.
Okay.
That was a city council policy directive and I'm complying.
Okay.
But if you want to change policy, I will not disagree with that change because I've never had to do that before. I do not like doing that at all. And I could go on forever, but.
Been doing it since stable.
Yeah, that was something.
Doesn't mean it makes sense.
No, I don't think it makes any sense.
Well, I.
And it really is like, it, I just feel it just gives you his bragging rights.
Sure, just do it after we evaluate.
Yeah, I think most of us don't even read that before.
Right, I, I know I didn't read it and I don't think any of our evaluations are based on what was pre-written by the city manager. Right, I, I know I didn't read it and I don't think any of our evaluations are based on what was pre-written by the city manager.
I don't base my thoughts on this.
Okay, for the record, I can show you clearly that where it says, I agree with what the city manager said on a few times. I'm not saying in this evaluation, I clearly said in historical evaluation, so I'm not making stuff up. Just because we've been doing it for a long time, the city manager would love to not do it. And if we want to help him out and if we love him so much, I think it makes a lot of sense to possibly on a future date, remove this, uh, from his. It just, from an HR standpoint, Jane can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't see the logic in what the council was thinking on why someone would fill out their own evaluation. Here's how, what I think about myself before we have it.
Wes, it's not unusual. It's not unusual for an executive at a particular level to be asked to do a self-evaluation first. It's relatively common.
Okay, I will yield.
Not that anybody enjoys doing it.
Jane, hush.
Well, I'm not letting you off the hook.
We're going to have a special meeting in the morning.
Yeah, let's just say it's not required.
Don't ask me to do one.
I don't think David really remains that well.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
He's, he's been doing it.
Mayor, if, if, if everybody's got their comment out, I would move at least for an opening on this discussion uh, that we discuss, uh, for the city manager, the same percentage amount that we gave to each staff with his same evaluation. And, uh, looking back, I see that was three percent of the present salary. Now, I know that, uh, this is not in the form of a bonus. This is three percent of his current salary. I, I would start that auction there for us to begin at three percent.
Three percent? That's what the norm is? So, if anybody has anything different, they want to toss out on the table?
I think I could defend that easily with what employees or staff with the same evaluation got, a percentage of their salary, of their, uh, current salary, three percent.
Okay. I would make a recommendation that last year, the city manager didn't, didn't accept his salary. I'd make a motion that based on his evaluation, I think it was four point nine, that we give him a bonus, um, of four point nine percent of his salary. And that salary would remain the same. That's just a start.
Sometimes the city manager wants to weigh in on bonuses. I don't know if he wants to do that or not. Because it does affect your salary and it does affect your retirement.
I.
Whatever he feels.
I, I think this is something that the council needs to sort out among itself. I, I don't. I, I mean, I don't really think I should be ethically and professionally.
No, I'm not asking you to say yes or no. I'm saying, does a bonus affect you?
The, the bonus affects the contributions towards retirement and a number of other things and.
Okay.
And it does, uh, yeah, there, there's some components like that that do not flow into, um, the city's contribution to, to the retirement system. I'll put it that way.
Yeah.
Although the way it is set up, because of the, the time that I've been here and, and according to the contract, everything that's in it, uh, that isn't lost through investments, uh, I get to keep.
I was going to put you on the spot there. I just was trying to enlighten somebody what the, what the consequences are, but.
Yeah.
Three percent is what I heard, if anybody gets something.
Well, I just started the auction off.
Yeah, right, I understand. Need to hear from down on the other end of the diastate or it's awful quiet.
Remain so, thank you. I think I said my piece and what I think about David and I think, uh, everybody knows.
Were you happy with three percent?
And. I, I'm, I'm not a big finance, you know, guru, so I feel that.
Three percent is around.
I will just, I've already figured it out. Four thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Right. I was going to round it off to forty-five hundred. Round it off to forty-five.
I'll let, you know, I'll let, you know, everyone else speak up on this. I mean, I'm okay with whatever everyone agrees with.
I was going to round it off to forty-five, which comes to like three seventy-four a month, I think it is, if I remember my numbers. I had it worked out. The four, the, I don't remember.
I'm agreeable.
Something forty-two, twenty-two or something like that was.
That'll be fine. Close enough.
The three percent, but I just bumped it up a little bit.
But what I'm, what I'm, I'm sitting here wondering if he's going to give it away again.
Well, that's up to him. He'll, he'll tell you what he's going to do with it.
Unfortunately, I, I have an answer to that question. Poor, poor, pitiful me. One of my toys, uh, the repair bill was sixty, over six thousand dollars. And that would be a four-wheeled toy. So, so this time, I need to keep it.
Mr. Wilson, you got anything you want to say? Bring it to you if the answer was true.
If I may, can I, can I provide information on what he has received in years past, the percentage?
Yeah, well, yeah, you can provide it, yeah.
Yeah, uh, in two thousand fifteen, he received ten percent.
Right.
In two thousand sixteen, he received five percent.
Right.
And of course, last year, he gave it away.
Right.
Just in terms of the ballpark range. Uh, in two thousand fourteen, it was nine point seventeen percent. Two thousand thirteen was five percent. And then the two thousand twelve was nine point five seven percent.
I know several times we did give him a good kick on it, but he was down, at that time, he was around, uh, somewhere in the hundred thousand dollar range.
We hired him in at ninety-nine thousand.
He started out at ninety-nine five.
Right.
Then that first year, he received three bonuses that brought him to, uh, he received three bonuses that year. Six thousand, seven thousand and, and another seven thousand, our bonus.
I was, I was always trying to get him up to the norm.
We had a little catch-up to do, I think.
He come in here, he come in here at the lowest pay of any city manager in the county.
Indeed.
And we, I was, my thinking was always trying to get him up into the category where he belongs.
Get him to where. Correct.
That's why, that ten percent year was my kick on it.
Absolutely.
I remember that night very well. Uh, we were getting him up into the hundred and twenty-four, hundred and forty thousand dollar bracket where everybody else in the county is even higher than that yet.
There are some higher still.
Yeah, so, I, I will take another motion if we need one. Three percent is what's on the floor.
Just give some comments on it. Um, the, when you look at the historical, and thank you for going through that, because I did the same, was to look at, you know, there were some handsome increases in there in the past and I, and I certainly agree, as you can see in my evaluation, that I think our city manager does a good job, even though we don't agree on everything. Um, but I do believe that, uh, we do have room for improvement and I do think that there, that he is at a very competitive rate as is today. And I think that, uh, I would be probably the lowest bidder. I don't think a raise is, is necessary at this time, especially when you look beyond the salary of, um, other benefits, where if you compare that to the private sector, I think that he is now in the strike zone of where we need to be as, you know, financially responsible with the money. Um, we've, I think, exceeded, uh, raises for our city manager compared to staff in the past. So, today, we are here at a, I think, a strong salary and I am not in favor, uh, for, for any increase. I think that we keep it the same. And when, again, you look at, uh, other benefits and other, uh, packages that are involved, um, such as retirement and, and health, they're all there. So, the cost is much larger than the hundred forty-seven thousand. And when you look at things like, you know, cell phones, laptops, I don't know how it all shakes out. I haven't dug in, in addition to, um, car allowances. Those are all there too. So, when you get the total number, I don't know how to get to the bottom line, but I feel like David Green is, uh, certainly strong. And, uh, we're, we are complimenting his efforts, um, today with a number that shows, uh, and represents just how strong we think he is. So, that's where I stand.
I'm going to rebut you a little bit there, Wes. Uh, I feel a little different. Uh, I think CEOs and CCOs and CFOs and they're worth their weight in gold if you're getting results. You mentioned all the, all the amenities and the, the premies he gets. Well, he doesn't take a car home. He rides his own car back and forth to work. A lot of times, he drives his own car around the city just to look at the city and do things. Uh, cellphone, he's entitled to. Everybody, you probably have a company cellphone. I got a company cellphone. Uh, you, you've got a company car maybe. I don't know who you work for. I don't know what you do, but, uh, those cars aren't private cars. Those are cars that is given to him for his use and what he does and he doesn't even use it hardly. I've seen him maybe three times, four times in a year at the most in that car. And he goes to events. If he go into a event, he goes to the Christmas thing for the employees, he goes in the city car. That's what he uses. He doesn't go home in it. So, your misconception of him getting a city car is out in left field because he doesn't use that city car for personal business to go home or come back and forth to work. It's here as a city car. Every, every, every employee in this city has use of a city car. That works for the, even the people at Public Works, the district people, they're all in a public car. And, and all these staff people right here, they all use a, a public car from the city to go to meetings, which that's the purpose of it. That's why it's in there. And it also not only mentions in his contract that he's entitled to a three percent raise every year. So, not living up to the three percent raise is not living up to your contract with him. So, you're being a little strong-handed. He's entitled to that by, by contract.
I don't, that's not how this contract reads at all. With all due respect, he, he, he's entitled to what this council approves and, um.
He's entitled to a three percent CPI according to his contract.
Or what?
Hmm?
Or what?
Or whatever you want to give him.
Yeah, that's, that's the point.
If you don't want to give him nothing, then you vote that way. That's, that's what I feel.
But there's no, there's no moral, you know, level here that you're going to frame on me.
No, no, I'm not trying to make a.
Of course, the car allowance, because I think there might be some miscon, uh, some, can you explain, someone explain how the car allowance works?
I can explain the car allowance. He receives three hundred and fifty dollars, three hundred and fifty dollars a month to cover the cost of him using his own car. And for me personally, having just purchased a car, good luck getting three hundred and fifty dollars to cover your insurance, your gas mileage.
Well, additionally, it's subject to tax. It's not a free ride. It's, it's, it's subject totally to tax. And I do not record the mileage, uh, because it's too much trouble to bother with. And so, it's totally treated as income.
Yep, thank you. And that's the point I wanted to make, that the mayor says that he has a car that he does not use and it's not the case at all. A car allowance is cash money paid to him and when you add all that up, so there's, the way you explained it is not how it is treated. Uh, as Jane explained, it's three hundred and fifty dollars per month in revenue in addition to the hundred forty-seven thousand. Um, I think we're at a good spot and.
Whatever your feelings on that, so.
Thank you.
Whatever you feel. You have your opinion on it. Mike?
I think three percent raise for the city manager is fair and I'd be willing to go along with that.
Move, make a motion. Or we got a motion from Mister Randles? Did you motion it, Randy, or not? The three percent.
Did you say, did I?
Yes, yeah, you were talking about.
I thought I did. If I didn't, I'll read it again.
No, I, I was asking if you made, if you started to make a motion, didn't you not?
Yes, and part of that motion, that being three percent of his current salary, uh, with it being added to the salary, not as a bonus, as a one-time thing. And there, there is a fringe benefit to that because most people can retire with their high three or their high five and a bonus doesn't do nothing but, uh.
Mister Brown agrees with you on it, so.
Yeah.
He was, he was going to do the bonus, but he agrees with your motion.
Yes, so I understand that that's be added to the base salary, just like all the other employees.
We have a motion and do we have a second, Mike? Is that what you want to do?
My second.
Yeah, okay. We have a motion by Mister Randles and a second by Mister Brown, Mayor Proton Brown, to install a three percent increase on Mister Brown. Or, I mean, Mister. What color I was talking? Okay, uh, call the roll please.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Mayor, uh, Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Randles?
For the motion.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
My mouth does not work.
All right, we move on to item number ten.
How about nine?
Oh, I'm sorry, I got to open the nine. That's what I did, open the. Okay, ratify, oop, city council designate one city official to the voting delegate for the ninety-second annual conference in Hollywood. Florida League of Cities Conference. Um, Miss Raymond, I understand you're going.
I am going. I was asked at the Florida League of Cities, when I sat on the Space Coast Florida League of Cities Board, and I suggested I would go.
I feel like you being the city's representative with the Florida League of Cities, that you should be our voting delegate at the convention.
I'd be honored. Wow, done deal.
My second.
I think when you, when you participate, you learn a lot. Uh, that's kind of a, uh, sequestered group of people that the motions are, I mean, all the agendas are already there and the resolutions are already there and you're going to, you're going to learn a lot, so.
I have learned a lot. I've met most of the mayors and the Mayor Protons and council people around Brevard County. And I met some of the senators and I think this has been.
I wasn't saying that.
Very beneficial.
I'm saying the conference, when you go to that voting, your voting delegate. And, uh, I'm hoping, did you all sign up for one of the policy committees yet?
Yes, I, I did. I signed up for transportation because we do need to take care of A-one-A.
Right.
And I did get on that state policy committee.
Okay, good. Okay, that's what we need.
Okay, moving us along, Mayor. As the time gets away, I would, uh, like to move that Councilmember Raymond be designated as a city official as a voting delegate in the ninety-second, uh, annual Florida League of Cities meeting.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mister Randles and a second by Mayor Proton Brown to.
Thank you, Dave.
Nominate Miss Raymond as our voting delegate at the League of Cities. You call the roll please.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Randles?
For the motion.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Okay, now we'll move to item ten. We approve the multi-generational facility and cultural arts preservation and enrichment Cape Center. Item number nine, or ten, I'm sorry. Okay, we, we do have a lot of cards on this one and I want the council to first go into discussion on it. We heard it from Mister Gustavo, the last meeting. Anybody got anything they would like to ask Mister Bagarres?
I'd like to say something.
He's here, he's here for that reason, so.
I'd like to say that I think Gustavo has done a very worthy job representing our interests and our city vision. I feel that the Culture and Leisure Service Board has worked diligently for the last two years on this also. And I think we have, um, I think the last, last year, this was approved. It's in the city budget. And anyone is welcome to take a look at that. This is the budget. It was approved September thirtieth, twenty seventeen. And I feel that we had two public forums, one that was very well attended. Uh, we also have a lot of people who would like to upgrade our city. This helps our property values in many ways. This is something that we could all be proud of for many, many years. It is not that huge. It's an eighteen thousand square foot. We have, um, so much money per square foot on this that is, uh, silver standard. And I think that it is a good, good plan that we have. Tonight, we are just approving the building plan. And I think that this was already approved by the previous council. Isn't that correct, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. You're all the way.
So, I think that this is just part of the process once again. And, uh, there is a beautiful design. As I said, it will up our property value and hopefully we have our children and our residents doing constructive things such as exercise. Thank you.
Miss Riddles?
No, I, I would pass just a little bit, except that the, the choice of the individual selections of three, uh, designs has been in front of about six boards. And, uh, everybody in the public, probably as, as ninety percent of our residents has either voted for or against one of the boards or the other. It's been out on a different thing. In fact, I just found out reading here that it was out on Twitter. So, uh, but in any event, um, a lot of public opinions. Uh, so, uh, but in any event, um, a lot of public opinions, it went to the school board. It's been, uh, schools, it's been every place, and they've selected, we had three options, three, uh, uh, design features, and it seems that they've pretty well, the design, I guess, is in front of you up there now. Uh, that is, that's option one for those of you that may not have seen it. Uh, can you give me option two? Good show. Uh, that's option two. That's, uh, a little different. And option three, uh, is same square footage, a little bit outside design. And it seems the residents, uh, have made their choice with the children and with, uh, Culture and Leisure Services. And even at, uh, uh, Friday Fest, there was a table there. Josh put up a table there and even got opinions there. Uh, on June the 6th, we had a community brainstorm meeting, and, um, everybody voted what they thought there. We had the Culture and Leisure Services on May 23rd and again, May 31st, and it's pretty well decided. I don't think that the question is about are we going to do it. It's which is the most pleasing to the, to the residents. It's three different, one's a Fort, uh, Key West style, one's Mediterranean, and the other's contemporary. So, uh, that's kind of where we're at. Uh, part of that, uh, and I was at the other city council when we were there and discussed this, we didn't have the designs. We came up with a set amount of money based on the square footage that we want. And then we went out to, uh, a design person, and, uh, they said, "Well, for that amount of money and that square foot, I'll do you some designs." And, uh, they did. We borrowed the money. Uh, I guess part of it is, uh, through our CRA. Is that correct?
That's right.
And, uh, the promise that was made that there would be no city, uh, tax, of alarm taxes paid into this building. And, uh, the city manager has, uh, been very successful with tourist development center, looking at their needs because it's going to be an attractive one for the next building. Uh, so I believe that, uh, through this, in fact, it's almost budget time, and you'll hear some good news then coming, I believe. But, uh, the fact is that it's not your tax add valorem that's going into this. It's going to be grants, things that we get from other areas. Uh, our budget, uh, add valorem is just a little over $4 million a year, and that takes care of code enforcement, emergency services, and the sheriff's department. And there's no money left over for fringe benefits like that. So it's our task to find someplace, get to get these grants, like we're getting from the county. As the property value increases, we get that, you just heard earlier in the meeting, that TIF, Tax Improvement Fund, that we get that money to keep here in the city. So, uh, it's not a burden to the city. I was against it in the beginning, spoke against it harshly because I didn't think we needed to borrow the money. And then, uh, over a period of six, eight, nine, 10 months, we found other reasons and found the money, which was the important part, because, uh, it would really saddled the city with money. So with the state help, with everybody's help, uh, because everybody wants to be on a winning wagon to say, "We helped pay that," or "We helped do that." So, uh, I think, uh, the choice is, is whatever the choice that the residents want, uh, we're going ahead with it at this point.
Yes, thank you. Thank you both for your comments so far. Look forward to hearing, uh, Mayor Potem and the mayors as well. And my, my thoughts on this is, uh, this is, this is not just a, a design decision. You, you can't have design without costs, and they're, they are not mutually exclusive. If we were voting a design decision tonight, I would agree, and I think we have three beautiful designs. Um, but with designs, you have materials, and with materials, you have construction costs, and then you have maintenance and long-term costs. And I worked very hard to question what those were, and our staff hasn't done a good job. Our staff has done an exceptionally good job, and this isn't about staff today. This is about this council, the people you elected. And this council has to make a decision on these designs. The staff has went above and beyond, and I think you'll see in my score how I rank them, from in community engagement to Gustavo leading Cultural and Leisure Services, all the way down the line, every department. The point of the matter is, is that staff talking to public. That staff at a brainstorm meeting, leading a presentation with roughly 35 people. That staff interviewing 12 people to discover a needs deficiency, um, to qualify for the grants and whatnot. That is, uh, staff that is working hard to, uh, put together a workshop. And from there, you've got, I think, maybe 18 to 20 people who showed up. And that's not easy, and I get that. But today, and then we, we have the Twitter, and I think that the statement of 90% of residents knowing about this is wildly off-base. Um, I think that we have probably a fraction of that. And just, I think Twitter stats, I think we, Josh will certainly correct me if I'm wrong, under 20 likes. Doesn't matter. That's a great effort, and I applaud those efforts, and I'm happy about that. 20 people. We've got 10,000 people in this city. And if we are going to ignore costs and simply pick our favorite thing by aesthetics alone, that is very irresponsible. That's this council, not staff. Staff's done everything they can. And my concerns with this is the fact that, why would we not want to take the time on one of the largest projects this city has ever seen, 6.2 million dollar project? That's real money. Councilmember Randall said he didn't want to take on any more debt, but they found out it was a CRA. Is that correct?
Yeah.
We took on more debt. We took on 6.2 million dollars in debt, so you didn't get what you wanted there, and that's unfortunate.
Excuse me, but we got a method of paying for it.
That's right. And the method of paying for it is outlined here, if, if you go to the, you know, capital improvement revenue, and it describes things as could be changed today, and we've got grants and the mechanisms, a communication services tax, a public service tax, guaranteed entitled portion of the state revenue sharing funds, a local government half-cent sales tax, a franchise fees, amounts on a deposit in the debt service fund totaling 3.1 million. There, there are many different pledges that are put aside to pay for this. And the fact of the matter is, we took on more debt. And there was a time when we were very low debt, and I used to applaud the old timers through here. And there's some, there's some ways to leverage debt. Don't get me wrong. I understand that side of it. And our staff worked very hard to get a exceptional interest rate here. So the mu- the money to buy the money, double thumbs up. Job well done. Hats off. Now that we've got the money in the bank, I'm over here raising my hand, say, "Council." We've got three very different designs. And if they're 10% of part in costs, what are they? Staff's worked hard to do it. What are we going to do? Under sunshine law, we cannot ever meet only 12 times a year. I know some of you have some complaints on the length of these meetings. I just got back from a forum. Cape Canaveral, I have not met a city that meets less than us, or in many cases, as long as us. Eight to 10-hour meetings in some cities, I am not applauding for that. Two meetings a month, I'm not promoting or trying to push for that either. I like the way we have it. But we only get to meet here. We have never met, the people you elected have never met, to say, "Which one of these three do we like best?" In a workshop, is textbook perfect opportunity to discuss how we want to spend 6.2 million dollars on this beautiful three designs. Gustavo did a fantastic presentation in representing what he thinks is best, and you can believe I'm going to value his opinion and expertise there. The people spoke, surveys have went out, and I sent an email aware to many of you. And within a few minutes, hundreds of people showered in saying, "I had no idea." And that's not staff's fault. That's our fault. And I want to do something about it. And I want to get this council together. Let's roll up our sleeves. Let's loosen our ties and say, "Hey, what do we want to do?" And let's open it up to the public. And I want to go to bed after we've done that, saying, "You know what? We gave, we gave the people every chance to make this a success." And some of the things that I think that will get this council back on the right page is to not lean on staff for everything. They work very hard every single day. It's this council's responsibility to say, "Guys, what do we want to do? We've heard a staff presentation at a brainstorm. We've got some Twitter feedback. What are the differences in the cost?" One of them has a metal roof, right? If I show you three pictures, and you ask me the nicest one, you can, I mean, we've done this in a car lot. We've done this at homes. The one you like visually is very different than the one when you show the price tag. And I'm not saying pick the cheapest. I'm not saying pick the most expensive. I'm saying let's pick the right one. And just some more notes on that. In my time, I want to fully express myself and certainly hear from the public, is ask ourselves, what is so concerning about a workshop? What are we scared of up here to meet together? Why wouldn't we want to take the time to spend $5 million budgeted for a multi-generational facility? And why wouldn't we want to take the time to spend...
You should have been to some of the workshops we had on this building. And you, you'd know why. I'd rather not do workshops. I'd let staff do all that legwork for you. That's what you got them for. We spent, Randy, Rocky?
Yes.
You were workshopping the city hall, which, workshopped with the other council?
Yeah, many years ago.
1:00 in the morning, 12:30, 1:00, 1:15.
Uh, you're talking about a workshop on this city hall that we're sitting in here?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, and what was so painful about that?
Well, it was just like nobody could make a decision.
Okay, so we don't like the public participation?
Not, not the council, the city.
The people?
The city, the, I think the people have had a, uh, it, it, I, I read all these emails. "Oh, I didn't even know they meet, you know, the council meeting. Oh, yeah, well, get informed if you want to know what's going on. Get informed. Come to the meetings. Stop by city hall. Talk to the planner. Talk to Gustavo. Talk to engagement. Talk to, talk to the people." But if you want to get informed and know what's going on, yeah, you got all the means of social media. And you mentioned it yourself. You only had 27 likes or whatever you said. Is that our fault? I talk to people every day. I have people see me every day and ask me what's going on, and I tell them. I try to tell everybody what's going on. It is not my fault, or I shouldn't say I shouldn't get in my car and go around the neighborhood and twist everybody's arm and drag them down here. It's their will, what they want to do. You're on live cast now. Everybody's seeing what's happening. Now, if they're not paying attention, that's, don't throw that back on us because I've had, I've had workshops up to here in 20-something years. I don't want to, I, I, I got staff. We got a good staff that does all that. That's why we don't have workshops. If you want to have a workshop on this, have a workshop with staff, and you'll learn all about it.
No, no, sir.
Or you want to workshop with the citizens.
I want to workshop with the citizens. Imagine that.
That's where you're going to be figuring if you want to plant petunias, palm trees, uh...
No, sir. No, sir.
Yeah, it is. That's what it's all about.
No, sir.
Excuse me. Excuse me, I have something to say. I think there's a little bit of a misconception here. From my understanding, is every single one of these buildings that we have, these three buildings, they're the exact same price per square foot. Is that correct, Gustavo? So, I mean, there's no difference in price. They're equal. So I don't understand. I guess I am confused. And the same thing with the Cape Center, that again, they're all the same price tag. This has been worked out, drummed out. I sat at two of the public forums. I've sat at the rec board and Culture and Leisure. From day one, when this was discussed, we have a city website, on the city website, under Culture and Leisure. This has been shown to the public. Some people, I'm very sorry, have just missed the bus. We've dis- we've been discussing this. I'm a homeowner. I'm vested in the city, and I know what's going on. I've been here since 2003. But I've taken the effort to serve on the boards. My husband and I both have. And we come, and we say and state what we like and what we don't like. So I'm sorry if some of the residents have missed the bus.
I haven't finished the discussion, Adam. If you don't mind, I'd like to just finish.
Good.
You missed the bus. How does that make you feel? Um, workshops are, workshops are designed by the state of Florida, given to cities to have the power for this. And if your council is saying that they do not want a workshop, what they're really saying is they do not want a public participation on a very important design.
Yeah, that's...
And because this workshop that we're proposing, that I would like to propose, and I'm, still don't know what the, the delay is, or what the concern is, more people in the past 48 hours has given feedback on this than probably all of the compiled data that we've, have combined. I can show you email after email. And the fact of the matter is, at the last brainstorm, some people had some questions about the money. And the money is not ever discussed. Which one do you want? And I get it. If your staff swing for the fences, but when you, when it gets to our debt, go for the best. That's, that's, you can go for the, whatever you can get through on, at, take that 6.2 million and squeeze it as far as you can and get the most value. Uh, I was at the, I was the only one at the Culture and Leisure Services Board. I go to the boards. I'm very involved, and I see what's happening. I was sitting there by myself with my 10-year-old daughter and wife, only ones here. And when we went through it, they, they said, you know, "We like this one, and no one talks price." Then we go to the design, and I can't talk in those meetings. Some, some questions came in about the money, and I think it was wildly misrepresented. The truth of the matter is this, and the way I see it, and I challenge any council member or staff to correct me if I'm wrong, the millage rate was increased by 20% final adoption September last year, 2017. And had you not raised that millage rate, you would have a very hard time justifying how to pay for these, this loan. And I understand the hocus pocus, the money moving around, but the, these taxes that I read off had to come from another budget to come over and to earmark and to pledge and to pay for this particular loan. And you could have spent that CRA money in any way. You could have spent those utility franchise fees in another way. But they're earmarked and they're handcuffed now to this loan. Your dollars are handcuffed to it. And because of that, now they had to raise taxes by 20%. We had to go into debt, and we're approaching $20 million in debt. It's great interest rates. Don't get me wrong, but it's in debt. In five years, when another hurricane strikes or some infrastructure improvements are dramatically needed, are we going to have to go back to the drawing board and take another $5 million? Where are we going to draw the line? And all I'm sitting here today...
Wes, can I, can I interrupt you, Wes?
Excuse me, I'd like to finish, unless I'm out of conduct, Mr. Mayor.
No, you're not out of conduct. I would like to respond to what you're saying.
Staff can make a comment if they would like to. We let you make comments, Seth.
If staff wants to make a comment. I'll, I'll wait till after Wes is finished.
Thank you, Dave. I appreciate that. The, the millage rate was increased. It had, it had to be increased.
I'd like to interrupt for just a second if I could.
Okay, sure.
Would you like to mention about the last prior two years prior to last year?
No, I'm just talking about last year. The recent taxes were increased.
You want to mention just bad. You don't want to mention good.
I got plenty of good things to say.
How about the last prior two years? We lowered taxes below rollback, if you understand what that means. Um, we lowered, we lowered two years.
Well, then let's go back when we were debt-free. I mean, let's, if you want to dream.
We weren't debt-free at any time, and every, uh, the city's never been debt-free.
The fact of the matter is this, we raised taxes, and you were not told that in the brainstorm. You weren't told that in any of the meetings. Taxes were increased, and they had to be increased to pay for this. Gustavo, I love you, but he said, "Your taxes are not going to increase." That is the truth. They are not going to increase. He did not mislead anyone. What should have been said was that they did increase, and that's okay. They increased in debt. And if you do not believe that, then please come talk to me, and I encourage you, bring your budget with you, and we'll talk through that. And I'd like to rest right there. And if anyone disagrees that taxes increased, because I saw some emails flying back and forth.
I'll be the first to admit, we raised them last year, but we had good reasons to raise them too. We got what we wanted. We got it at a damn good rate too, you might mind you.
Yes, sir.
And we got a lot of nice money sitting there to, at our disposal if we want to use it, and we will... And we got a lot of nice money sitting there to our disposal, if we want to use it and we want to use it debt free.
That's right.
It's going to be all paid for by CRA, infrastructure monies, it's going to be paid for by TDC monies and it's going to be paid for by grants. And yeah, you talked about the mumble jumbo, everybody, the old peanut game, yeah. The city, you play peanut games when you're in, in big money.
The problem is it's not your money, it's the people's money.
I know that, it's my money too.
They deserve to know how that.
It's my money just as well as anybody else's.
The people deserve to know how their money's spent and I would like to see this council go through the costs of the three designs. In addition to the beautiful designs, put them side by side, here's your design, here's our estimated cost. I'm not going to say, how many magnolia trees are you going to print? How many ACCs?
Can I address your point specifically?
That's what you get into.
Can I address, because you, okay, let's just talk building wise. Okay. There's several ways to arrive at approximate per square foot cost. One of them is the ICC, International Code Council. Are you familiar with that?
Never done it.
The International Code Council, are you familiar with them? Okay, the International Code Council is what building officials use to estimate per square foot cost when they're going to charge a permit. So if a builder, for example, comes in and says, hey, I have this big Taj Mahal building and it's only going to cost me a million dollars, but it's really thirty thousand square foot. Something there doesn't quite add up, right? So there's an international code per square foot that is, that is? That, that comes up yearly, okay? So according to the twenty eighteen ICC code, okay? Their range per square foot for the buildings we're trying to build are between a hundred and sixty two and a hundred and seventy dollars per square foot. It doesn't say per square foot with a metal roof, per square foot with solar, per square foot, everything, per square foot, okay?
And that figure is, is also, it's important to note, Mr. Morrison, and that, that figure is adjusted for different parts of the country. So we're not using California rates, we're not using Ohio rates, we're not using my Tennessee rates, we're using Florida rates. And I know you're very keen on treating the public and private similar. I've heard you say that very often. These are, this is, these are the numbers that we use when we're, when we're determining what the private folks, what the cost of their projects are. So we're compared, we're not treating them any differently than we would treat ourselves.
And I think it's important that Gustavo provide the information now as to what that cost is for the multi-generational facility. Because it is not six point two million. The six point two million is the combined Cape Center and the multipurpose generational facility. So right off the bat, there's been some disinformation or lack of understanding circulating throughout the community. So Gustavo, it's time to clarify that. And we are using for planning purposes, the higher number of two hundred per square foot, eighteen thousand square feet equals approximately four million dollars. There's site work to do, there's furnishings and fixtures and those kinds of things. So for budgetary planning purposes for these projects and borrowing money, we use those numbers for each of the projects. Additionally, we relied upon professional input from the architects that were involved at that time. And we utilize those numbers, that's the same experience numbers that we use for the city hall building as well. And then what we did from there is we have site work, we also have furniture and fixtures. And when you put it all together, that comes out to an estimate, including contingency, design costs and everything. Six point two million dollars for two facilities, not for one. Additionally, we, the city, do owner direct purchase. And what that allows us to do is not pay the overhead of the contractor and the carrying cost of the contractor, nor do we have to pay any sales tax. And we go ahead and purchase those items and require the contractor to allow us to do that, agree in the contract that we negotiate and we buy those. So we automatically get the sales tax savings and I can throw out a number, I never know for sure what I pay for sales tax, but it's approximately six and a half to seven and a half percent. So that's a savings right off the bat of the estimated cost. Additionally, we value engineer and we go through an analysis process to make sure? That we're using the most appropriate products and, and equipment and machinery for our needs. And we generally, on this building, we value engineered and saved almost four hundred thousand dollars in round numbers off this project. That's the way we approach them. And so in general, the approximate cost is used for square foot calculation. One of our new employees, oh, by the way, was a construction project manager most of her career. Hello, Deborah, how are you tonight? And that's what she did for a living and I'm pretty darn confident, she'll say, yes, that's usually the way it works out and the way it's done. That way you ensure that you get the best possible price. And additionally, we negotiate very firmly with the contractors on markup and overhead and profit. And the word has it? That the contractor was upside down on the city hall project when all is said and done. Maybe yes, maybe no, but the bottom line is I can tell you, we didn't pay more. And, and so we have to understand that this is a process, it's transparent, it's open, it's involved. And with all due respect? The city council, every council meeting is treated fully for public participation and evolves or devolves into a workshop. So there is no need in my judgment, and yes, I do recognize I'm hired help? To have duplicate meetings when these are also function as workshops and business meetings. The city attorney and all of us would tell you that the typical city council or city commission meeting is actually a business meeting. And that other than the required public hearings per city code or state law? The only time the public gets to participate in a meeting in other places? If they follow their own rules and regulations and policies, is the three minutes under public participation. This city has, ever since I've been here, allowed the public to basically walk up and speak anytime they want. And the only thing the city has asked is please fill out a card so we know who you are and identify your address? For the public record, transparency. So I think we were apples and oranges and peaches and pears and tangerines and all kinds of stuff, all rolled up into one. The bottom line is, we're not going to enter into a contract when all is said and done. Until we have as close as we can get to absolute firm numbers. And the intent is for everything to be built responsibly, lead silver standards as a, as the minimum. The roof on this building, I don't know if everybody knows, this is a flat roof on this building. It may not appear to be flat, but it's flat and it's big up there. And, and, and I think that when we talk about solar and different things like that, we are mindful. Our architect advised us right now that solar, his engineer, the one for the project advised us that solar isn't cost feasible right now. And the technology is changing so quickly. In their judgment and in their professional opinion, it may not be appropriate to plan for solar right now until all of this settles out. Is that correct, Gustavo, or incorrect?
That is correct, at the kickoff meeting, TLC Engineering said that right now for the technology that it's today, solar, there's no bang for the buck there.
And, and additionally, on this same train of thought, when we look again at the city's financial situation? I don't think the city council can sit here and say the city is in dire financial straits at all. Your auditor sat here three or four months ago and told you you're in very strong financial condition. You're exceeding all in positive ways, all of the established metrics. And additionally, they also indicated, you know, we talk hurricanes. The city's budget absorbed two hurricanes in one fiscal year. Two, Irma and Matthew occurred in one fiscal year, if I remember correctly, and we absorbed those costs. And we ended up with a fund balance. For those who want to know, the proposed budget that we are drafting and taking through the final review by me? Includes a so-called tax reduction below rollback rate. And I challenge anyone to tell me how many other governments that they know of in Brevard County or in Florida? That are actually doing a tax rate reduction. For the record, people, the city of Cape Canaveral's tax rate is the third lowest in Brevard County. Not the third highest, it's the third lowest in Brevard County. And when we do a rollback, if the council policy accepts staff's recommendation? We will additionally be, remain solidly among the lowest three. I think when we look at our service levels and our cost efficiencies, there's always room for improvement. I'd be, I made a living as a consultant, paying our bills and myself and employees rather well on savings that we generated for others with our recommendations. I bring that to you as part of my salary and my experience and there's no upcharge to that. So when we look at all the bells and whistles and what we're talking about, the understanding clearly is this functions as a workshop and as a business meeting. It's been that way for the eight years that I've been here. And additionally, meetings cost us money. And if we're doing, killing two birds with one stone, why spend more money? That's my opinion and I am hired help and I fully understand that. But I, I think there's just some points that need to be clarified. I think Gustavo, I've covered everything of substance. And, and this comes back to the city council more times than I would like to do. From the final process, the final cost, the recommendation to the council, the going out for the bids, the value engineering, the ODP requirements? And selecting the materials. And oh, by the way, let there be no doubt, the agreement that the CRA approved tonight and the city council approved tonight? Provides for? The concept of these buildings, the multi-generational and the Cape Center? They're located in the CRA, a portion of the costs can be paid for and will be paid for if the council so chooses. And the CRA so chooses, be paid for by city and county tax increment dollars. And additionally, on top of all that? We can't or shouldn't lose sight of the fact that we're financing the asset expense for ten years. And tell me, this building shouldn't last for forty or fifty or sixty years plus. The same thing with the multi-gen, the, the city hall across the street that will become the Cape Center has already lasted, I think, Bob, you and Rocky are historians. How many?
Sixty-three is better.
So sixty-three, so when we look at any of us leveraging debt for not more than ten years at below inflation interest rates? Which means considerably favorable. And the asset lasts a minimum of four or five or six times that, how in the world can that be viewed as irresponsible? I, I don't know. I wish I could tell you that my house wasn't financed for thirty years, but it is. So I think, let's, let's just kind of shoot straight and, and, and talk apples as best as we can to apples and, apples and oranges and oranges. But I and the staff have a fiduciary responsibility to this city. That's part of our requirements, I'm bonded, et cetera, per, per requirement. So does anyone really think that I'm so irresponsible and so foolish for ego at seventy years old? That I'm going to drive the city intentionally in the ditch? Much less think that I can pull the wool over the city council's eyes and do so in a public forum. None of that adds up in my judgment. Hopefully I've helped clarify where the city sits today. And we can provide this information in documents and research. And utilizing two hundred dollars per square foot as the primary estimate is consistent. It's the way we treat the private sector and many people say government should function more like private sector and we're trying. But I mean, that's truly honest to God where we are. Like it or not.
If I could, if I could finish, thank you for that explanation, I was in the discussion, I think that this all started with your, your clarity there. If we think that this roof is good for solar, we're, we're just mistaken badly. I'm a solar professional, I've had a solar company for five years, I work in Massachusetts, we don't enter the Florida market. This roof is horrible for solar, so when they say that they're mindful of solar, there was no mindfulness of solar. I'll talk to TLH Consulting whenever they're ready. It's not about solar today, it's about being solar ready, okay? So in five years of solar's there, you get a fifty year roof, you don't want to design it with a bunch of pitches, that's the point. The fact of the matter today is there's, the apples and oranges comment, I agree with you. The only misconception is coming is to the people. We're not as great as we think we are, okay? When we get out there in the trenches and you, and you talk to people, people do not know what's going on. Here's why. This is a six point two million dollar combined project, five million for a multi-generational facility, one point two for a Cape Center. We have not and we can right now make a decision, if we care about public opinion at all. Sounds like we may not, because we don't want to do a workshop. But if we, and a workshop is not, I highly disagree with the city manager, very different than the three minutes we give you there, very different. A workshop is we set up some easels and we pack the room and trust me, if we hold a workshop for this, it'll be the biggest workshop you've ever seen. That's a good thing to me, it might scare some people up here on the stage. But the fact of the matter is, we are going to, we are, that no one knows, six point two million dollars? We can make a decision right now to take five thousand dollars out of the six point two million dollars? And send a piece of mail to every resident in this community. Imagine that. Wouldn't it have been nice to get a piece of mail knowing your taxes increased, increased last year? Nope, they drop it in the paper, state law required, and it sits over there.
Ooh, that is incorrect, everybody got a trim notice. Everybody got a trim notice.
Get something in your mailbox.
Yes, it was, the trim notice goes, goes to the property.
All homeowners receive that and we, if you read your tax bill and you will see that very clearly, when you're a homeowner, you pay tax.
After the fact.
Mr. Morrison, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up. I'm not going to cut you off, but go ahead and finish, please.
Trim notices after the fact. If we're not willing to take five thousand dollars and to invest it to educate the citizens within this community? The, the, the meetings for the tax increases where the letter didn't hit your mailbox, hey, we're having a meeting, tax increase. You never got a letter saying that there was a meeting, but they'll sit up here and say, we had a meeting, where were you? Where were you? And then they'll say, you missed the bus, you never had a bus, the bus never came by your house. It was never there, there was never a workshop. I've never met with any of this council, none of them. I have never met with Rocky, I've never met with Angela, Mike or Mayor about this project because I can't, and that's all I want to do, is meet with them. That is it. And they do not want to do it and there's a big reason I think why. I think that they want to get this moving through and they fear that they may not like some of the things that the residents have to say. Because twelve people, they've got under a hundred people probably of documented who said, here's where we are.
Three hundred and fifty children at Cape, you saw it, interrupt.
You're way out of. I'm going to wrap it up, wrap it up.
I will gladly wrap it up, we might brag about our millage rate.
I've about heard, all I want to hear of you telling me, I don't care. I got news for you, pal. I care. I've got. I care.
Can I go ahead and speak?
You've been speaking for the last.
I'll wrap it up right here.
You're going to wrap it up because I'm getting tired of hearing you cuss to me that I don't care. I've been in this city from day one. And I have given my heart to the city, I gave many, many hours to workshops that proved fruitless to me. Because all I did was sit and listen to people argue over a palm tree or over stupid stuff. You got a, you got a engineering company here that's telling you that you can build that building for two hundred dollars a square foot or less.
The people have not seen that, I have not seen that, we brag about a low millage rate.
I'm telling you.
I'd like to finish.
You don't, you didn't listen very well to what he told you. He told you that.
I, that's the first time.
That's coming from your staff that you are so bragging about, doing a wonderful job and then you're sitting up here beating everybody to death.
I haven't beat this staff up.
I'm getting tired of you telling me that I don't care. That's all I heard from you since you started, is this council don't care. This council cares, believe me. We've advertised this thing till we're blue in the face. If you want to go around in your car and get everybody and pick them up and bring them to a meeting, have at it.
Put a piece of mail, forty-five cent stamp, it'll make wonders. No, I'm not done, I'd like to finish.
We're finished.
I haven't exceeded.
We got other people, we got a lot of cards here to go through and I'm sure we're going to hear the same thing.
Can I, can I finish?
Wrap it up.
I'm happy to.
Told you to wrap it up, but you keep on beating me to death that we don't care. I don't want to hear it anymore because I'll cut you right off. I don't want to hear it anymore, because I'll cut you right off.
There's, okay.
I'm tired of hearing that we don't care. This council cares. And if you don't like this council, take a hike, because this council cares. Believe me, I'm tired of hearing that. You have said nothing, but this council doesn't care all night.
That's not true.
Yes, you have.
I, I'm giving you ever, I'm giving you every opportunity.
I'm tired of hearing you say that we don't care. I'm tired of hearing it.
And I think we were close to a conflict of interest, too. I am sorry, but I am, I have, I have been offended many times. There has been close to conflict of interest. Thank you, and I think maybe we need more ethics training.
Because you got about another minute, I'm going to turn your mic off.
We have a parliamentarian here, if I, if I, if I've valued any ethics.
We don't care, that's all you've said, with all the comments you've made, is we don't care.
No, sir, if, what I'm saying is, if you care, a good way to show it is to hold the first workshop ever on the largest project this city has seen. That's all I'm asking. Show that you care.
This city hall was bigger than that building.
Well, anything, any process that we followed for city hall, we probably shouldn't replicate. Because that's got a lot of people fired up as well. So the, the last thing I want to say is.
Nobody pays attention, that's why they're fired up. Yeah, you can finish.
Well, it'd be nice if.
But I don't want to hear you say we don't care no more.
I, I said, if you care, you can hold a workshop and show. That's it, I didn't say you didn't care, and I haven't answered that.
You said it several times, and I'm tired of it.
The, the record will show what happened. The truth of the matter is, the, the low mileage rate gets tossed around quite a bit. There's other things that goes into city revenue streams called fees that go up every single year. So you got to look at the total amount of money coming out, not just the mileage rate as well. And the truth is, this council's got a tough decision to make. I am proposing, at the end, and we hear a public comment, that we do a workshop. And we do it quickly, and we pick one of these designs, and we give the people a fair chance to know the price tag next to the design. And I do not agree that your range is necessarily true, and I certainly don't agree. And I'm happy to have you on board on the construction side. We've got hundreds of construction professionals that are residents that pay taxes here that would love to collaborate with you, so thank you.
Okay. One thing great about this country is you can say anything, but it doesn't necessarily make it true. I'm, I'm appalled by Councilman Morrison to say that we have ignored cost in this project. I think everybody ought to just put their face over to him and let, let him slap him, because that's how I feel. I have grandkids, and I would never give my grandkids debts that they have to endure, and they're 11, 12, and 13. And I think for him to go ahead and make an inference that we don't care is, is mind-boggling. I've worked with him, he's been, he ran for mayor in 2012. This project has been talked about for years. Every step, he's tried to halt it or do something. The citizens, you're going to find, any kind of project you have, you're going to have citizens that are against it. But I tell you right now, as I speak to you, the majority of the citizens in Cape Canaveral are for this project. The majority of the citizens in Cape, he can twist it around, he can give misinformation, he can bamboozle some of you, but do your homework, that's all I ask you. Do your homework, and you will see that the city is, the sky is not falling, we're not going to be in financial ruin. Thank you.
Mr. Dickey, you had something you want to say.
Yeah, a while ago, I hope, I hope it's still in context, and I hope it still makes a point. Wes has been talking about debt quite a bit tonight. Is that true?
It's one of the factors that, yeah?
Yes, you have. And I think it's, it's important to put that in context. I mean, the city is a living, breathing entity. We're a family, if you will. And just like your family, you own property in the city, is that correct?
I have property, yes.
Okay, you have property. Did you have, do you have, did you have to take a mortgage out on that property?
No, sir.
Okay, you paid cash for it?
No, sir, I don't have a mortgage within the city, it's been in my wife's family's name.
Okay, bad example. Most folks have to get a mortgage for their home and for big expenses. The city is no different than that. Families have to take on debt to do certain things. The city is no different than that. If we want to get a home for our family, we, most of us have to get a mortgage. If we want to buy a new car, most of us have to take a loan out. Some, most folks aren't in your situation.
I've taken loans, I understand how loans work.
Most folks have to get a mortgage. The city is doing the same thing here, Wes. We're taking on, can I finish? We all, we all, we all got quiet, we all got quiet when you went on, so your turn to listen. My point is, is that when the city wants to do good things, provide amenities for their citizens, there's debt involved. Think about what the city was eight years ago. You're talking about eight years ago when the city had no debt or very little debt. There weren't any streetscapes in the city, there was no new fire station, there was no new police station.
And the parks were undeveloped and you parked in a dirt parking lot?
My point, Wes, is that in order for quality of life, which I know is important to all of us, quality of life costs money. And so that's the council's responsibility. Is that, what is that quality of life, what is that worth? And sometimes debt is involved. That's the only point I wanted to make.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, did you have any?
No, I said.
I don't have anything to say, I think it's all been said. Meetings were held, and I'm sorry if you didn't, make a meeting. I don't think the council needs to be blamed for you not getting to see this information. It's been all over the city, it's been at every event that we've held, it's been at council meetings, it's been under discussion, three different meetings. Gustavo's had it all over the city. Our engagement director, he's probably walked at the death all over the place. And if you didn't see it, I don't know where you were, but I, I'm sorry you didn't get to see it, but it's here, if you want to look at it, it's here. It's been, I, I'm just tired, I'm tired of looking, I'm ready to make a decision. And I'm sorry that I had to get out of line, Mr. Morrison, but I don't appreciate the attitude that you have towards this council and what we're doing. And if you don't like what's going on, you always are welcome to go. I mean, we have been functioning, just like Mr. Dickey said. Yeah, and I've been here for a long time, and yeah, I've seen it where we had no debt, but we didn't have a dang thing I was proud of. I'm going to tell you that right now. I'm proud of what we got today. We've worked hard to get here, and now we're trying to get back what we had 10, 12, 15, 20 years ago as, gee, Wes, we want everybody involved, and it don't work well that way. You got 50/50 in the city that don't like cats, you got 50/50 that don't like peacocks, and you got, you got 50/50 that don't like what you got. So you're going to waste a lot of time. It's been done, you got staff that does that, they bring it to you, they educate the city as well as they can. And I'm sorry that we don't mail out to every, every function $5,000. Let's see, how many items we got, how many items we got? We got 10 items, 14 items, 13 items? Let's mail them a mailing on everything that we do. Then you'll be broke, you don't operate that way. Do you mail out mailings to all your customers about everything? No, you don't, no, you don't tell me you do, because I don't think you do.
Just on.
I don't.
Most, a lot of cities put out $6.2 million in debt a vote to the people.
Well, that ain't going to the people, you're still misleading these people. That money is not their tax ad valorem money, that is money that the county's going to take away from you anyway.
Comes out of their pockets.
It comes out of their pocket, but guess where it's going to go if it don't go to the CRA? It's going to go over to the county so they can sink it into somebody's building that they want to give them eight and a half million to build a building that's ram-sacked or throw it away on crap that, and they're pleading and trying to get roads paved. Look at our roads. We got some of the best roads in the city, in the county. I'll stand behind it, we paid them three times since I've been in this city, involved in this government. And it, we're going to keep right on doing it. And it's not costing those people a lot out of their wallets. 3.9% tax on your tax. Yeah, that's a big dollar, boy. You pay the lowest taxes other than Valkaria and Malabar. Those are the two that are the lowest, the lowest. And all they are is spread-out country, nothing, they don't have anything down there. And we're right with them, and we got everything. I think we got the best bang for the buck that we can get. And you're sitting up here trying to tear it all down.
Just want to involve the people. I'm not against the project, I'm against the process.
The people have been involved.
Never been against the project, you can't show me one time I voted against this project. I've been against the process.
All you've done is talked against it all night.
The last meeting.
You've just talked against it all night.
Every, every step this project has had, you voted against it.
What do you mean, you didn't support it at all? You haven't supported it at all?
I've, I've supported it, that's not true.
No, you haven't.
That's not true.
Well, then vote for it then.
The RC-K contract.
Let's call Fairwall, vote, and vote for it, and you'll support it.
Look at the minutes.
I, I'll support a workshop, to know that I've been there and saying we involve the people.
It's been workshop to death through staff, through people, through meetings and everything. And I'm, I'm going to call for a motion to go. We're going to have a public hearing. I understand, I understand, but we're going to just call for a public hearing, we're going to have a motion on it. But I'm, I'm ready to do, I'm tired of it. Getting tired of calling, we don't care, we care. First person I got a card here is from a Mr. Bill Slute.
Having listened to the council, a nice discussion.
Sir, can you come up this way?
You need to, Bill, you need to come to the microphone?
I withdraw my request.
He withdrew his request.
Okay. Come to the microphone.
No.
No, that's all right, he don't need to. He just withdrawing his request, he said, I understand.
Yeah, he withdrew.
I do have touched upon most of the points that I was going to talk about. I'll talk about one thing.
Okay, come over here then.
Angela's screwed up.
As I mentioned, my name is Bill Slute, and I'm, I'm here on behalf of my, myself and my wife, Linda Slute, concerning this, this discussion that you've been having and the facilities that you want to build. I think it's very important, number one, and you've answered most of my questions, by the way, and it was very nice, and I appreciate the sharing that you did, one way or the other, between yourselves. I think it's very important that we, and this is the first time I've heard of this, by the way, that we understand what the purpose of these facilities are. Who, what needs are you meeting? Now, 40%, my notes are all messed up because of the discussion that was going on. Personally, I don't, personally, and I'm talking about my wife, too, I don't believe that the demographics of Cape Canaveral warrant the expenditures of monies for, for these facilities. Now, what do I mean? Cape Canaveral is number one in population of people of the ages between 60 and 69, okay? So you say to yourself, okay, well, how many of these people are going to possibly, if they know what the purpose of it is, enjoy it? And then another, number two, 60 and 69, and, and number two, in 70-plus years of age, okay? That's the, basically the population, the demographics of Cape Canaveral. So then I say to myself, will this meet the needs of Cape Canaveral? Now, I heard, mentioned before that we have some significant needs in infrastructure. I think you were mentioning that during the CRA discussion. Infrastructure, and I can see that, we do have a need for infrastructure. Now, does the CRA cover possibly, can we use that for CRA? I don't know, but that's something that needs to be discussed. Anyway, I just say that the demographics of Cape Canaveral, 60-plus in age, a great majority of them, basically, I don't think we'll use these facilities. And number two, one of the council members many years ago here told me that 40% of the citizens in Cape Canaveral do not pay taxes. And the person that told me that is shaking his head yes. So I'm saying, the, the other 60%, I'm going to have to cover the needs of all this? So that's, that's basically it. I think that needs to be considered, and I, I request that you do that. And I think a cost-benefit analysis really needs to be conducted, a cost-benefit analysis. Having been in the military, having done those things myself, I know that that's generally the first thing that is done. Once it's been decided that we are going to go this route, then we're going to do a cost-benefit analysis. Many of the things that the city manager mentioned, yes, possibly fit right into that. But anyway, that, that's, that's it. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Good evening, my name is Penny Zurker, I am a resident of Cape Canaveral. In addition to that, to validate the comments I'm going to make, I think it's important I point out that I am also the chief financial officer for Brevard Public Schools, slightly bigger entity. In addition to that, I've been the finance officer of three other school districts in the state of Florida. Coming through the 90s and the 2000s in the big build era at this date. I want to validate, because I received an email from Councilman Morrison today requesting my support against this, and I informed him we are very much for it. His comments back to me said, someone doesn't understand how a government bid, contract, and construction works. And I wanted to come here for public to hear how government, not just the city of Cape Canaveral, does this. The first thing you do is determine a budget, a planned budget. This council has set 6.2. The second thing is you get a designer, based on your budget, to design a plan for you so that you can pick one and send it out for a construction bid. Only once you have done that construction bid and received the bids back in, do you know what the cost of that building's going to be. And it could be much lower than what your budget is, it could come in at budget. Tonight, there is no one in this room who can say absolutely what the cost is, because it's not time.
Thank you.
My husband and I moved to this city two and a half years ago purposely, for the reason of all the wonderful benefits this city provides its citizens. We are a very active community, and the neighborhood I live in is a very active neighborhood, all the way up to the 80-year-olds who enjoy the parks, the pedways, and will enjoy the multi-generational center and the Cape Center. We are one of the most passionate couples. We love expressing to everyone we meet how wonderful this city is. Thank you, council, for everything you do to us. Councilman Morrison, I'd be happy to share my expertise of 35-plus years, and please vote in favor of the design so that we can move forward to the next process, and we do know how much this is going to cost us and that it's in our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Hi, Bill Hodge, I have a house in Harbor Heights. I'm apparently one of the ones that missed the bus, because every time I ask somebody, and I just heard about this earlier this year, but just in the last probably couple of weeks, anybody I run into, and I ask them, they know nothing about it, so. And then 30, I'd say 30-plus years ago, I've been here over 50 years. 30-plus years ago, the city would have something of this magnitude, would actually would send out a flyer to everybody, everybody in the city, I mean, we know about it. I don't know why, the, I mean, like I said, I've asked at least 20-some people, and this one woman said, I've lived here 15 years, how come I don't know about it? I said, well, the city expects you to go to the website and pay attention. That's what I was told. But anyway, and I went to this brainstorm session on this, and at the time, by the way, I want to thank Joshua for sending me some links so I could try to understand how the CRA, I still don't understand it fully, but, but anyway, I'll get into that later. But anyway, at the time, he said, it was only a 20% difference between the three designs. Now, maybe that was just a off-the-cuff, but 20% of $5 million, sizable amount of money. So I understand why Wes is asking for at least a price on which design to look at. Now, personally, I realize it's too late for this, but I, I think one thing I'd like to see you do is put in a survey. I, I realize it's already done, but at least put in a survey and say, are you, are you in favor of what we're proceeding? We're, we're planning on doing this, and I was told in the meeting, it was too late to put in a survey, but. to put in a survey, but I still understand why you couldn't at least put something in the survey, just get a feedback. Because I, I really don't think, there's nowhere near ninety percent, I'd be lucky at fifty percent of the city knows about this. I really don't think they do. Back to CRAs, now, what happens if we have another recession? I mean, the economy goes up and down, I've been here years, I've seen it go up and down several times, every ten, fifteen years. So if it goes back down to twenty dash, twenty to twelve rates, it looks like you don't have any CRE, CRE money, so, I don't see how that's handled, but that's just some information. I guess that's about it, that's all I got, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. John Eris, Eris, A, Eris? Is that right, Eris?
Hi, my name's John Eris, I live at three hundred Monroe Avenue, we're on the, directly on the north side of the city park, facing the, the basketball court. I've been a resident at this address since nineteen seventy-nine. I, I guess I'm one of those people that missed the bus, because until last week, I had no clue, I'd heard rumors that they were doing some work on the park, I'd seen the surveyors out there, I don't know if it was Stotler Stag, probably maybe a month ago, but I assumed it was something like maybe just redoing the basketball court, or putting something up new. When I found out, and I saw the, the map, and you say this has been, it works for two years, I was flabbergasted. I'm on our condo board, I've asked people residents, no one has a clue about this, they really don't. I think you guys have a problem with how you communicate with the community. If you did a survey of every resident in Cape Canaveral, I, I don't think you'd get above ten or fifteen percent, really, I really don't. I, I, I know you guys are doing a good job, more power to you to sit through these two-hour meetings. I mean, I, you know, I'm in my witch's sense, sitting here an hour, but I, I would like you to consider, what's so hard about maybe putting up a, a board in the library permanently? You get a lot of foot traffic, especially from those right around the area of concern right now, which is the city park. How much could that cost? How much could it cost to put up a board in the park, at the bulletin board there? I walk by that every day. So I, I would like you to consider, maybe it's too late for this, I hope not, but in the future, consider things like the previous speaker talked about, put a flyer out, how much can that cost? Even direct mail, out of a huge budget like this, how much could that cost to really get people the message? I don't do Facebook, I don't do social media, I don't do Twitter, I do not have time for that. I don't have time to page through a hundred and ninety pages of the email that I get on the Cape Canaveral, and on the website, it is not anywhere on the website prominently displayed, it's not in the top five. I, I don't know how to better communicate that to you, that we got a huge miscommunication here, we really do. Because if this has been going on for two years, I like to consider I'm, I'm involved in the community, we work hard on our condo board to keep our place looking nice. My second thing I want to skew into is, we are directly impacted by what's going on in the city park. The basketball court continually has garbage on it, I picked it up myself, it blows into our yard. The noise, the lights, get screwed up so often, you may notice, you might know my name, I've called many times, whenever there's a power outage or a time change, sometimes the lights are on till one o'clock in the morning, and that encourages people out there playing basketball, or skateboarding, or doing something else, when they're not supposed to be there. So it directly impacts everywhere around the perimeter, and we are directly impacted by this. So, I, if you can't do a citywide thing, at least when you have a huge project like this, do a mail or a flyer to everyone directly impacted, because I guarantee you, they'll show up, they really will. Because you guys, I, I know you are longtime residents, some of you may move on, but we're gonna have to live with us for all their time that we're at this residence, and we are directly impacted. So, I, I think that pretty much covers, but I, I would like you to consider how you communicate with the, I know some people don't care, I care, and I can prove it by a number of trash I've picked up in that, in that park over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you. One consolation, the basketball court won't be there at night no more, so, it'll be inside, you won't have to, you won't have to put up. This last one, it's got, I can't pronounce it. George Zuffer? Zuffer or something?
Jeff.
Oh, Jeff, okay. Oh, it's got two Fs, okay.
It's Jeff Zerker, thank you, mayor. I've lived here a little over two years, I've known about this project since almost the time I moved here, and it wasn't through, you know, any overarching effort, I don't spend a whole lot of time, you know, digging into things, but fortunately, you guys communicate well with the community, there's First Friday, you're always available in the community, you have board meetings, I was there when you raised the millage twenty percent, you know, in, in bad times, you reduce the tax rate, and in the good times, you raise it, that's basic Keynesian economics, I applaud you for your fiscal management of the city. Mr. Morrison, you, sir, when your signs came out with your smiling face and your big promises to run for the city, I asked you a couple times, I met you a couple times, and I could never, never get you to give me a straight answer as to what your positions were. I got a lot of, what I want to do is, I want to continue the city's vision. This is the city's vision, these are quality of life issues that will affect the citizens of Cape Canaveral for the next century. We have a lot of good things going on, and we need to continue it. And throwing out a Twitter and an email at the last minute to try to, you know, throw gas on a fire and get people all fired up, over a project that is valid, so that you can further what you consider to be a promising young political career, is the wrong thing to do, sir. You take, you, you took this job, you take it seriously, and not just take this as a stepping stone, where you can say, in a political ad sometime, oh, I cut taxes. It's more to it than that. Thank you for your efforts. We firmly support this project, it is a high quality of life issue, it is something that will continue to make everybody's property values rise in the city, and make this, as it has been, get national attention as one of the, the best small beach communities in the country. I don't know if you guys know that or not, but you know, we were like, number two, I, I, I want that little town in Washington State to prove it, that they're better than us. So you keep doing what you're doing. And by the way, we are a diverse community, this is not the villages, this is not a retirement community, this is a diverse community with people of many races and colors and sexes and ages and everything, and this is a community that needs to be for everyone.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm sorry, we got a, such a division on this, but it's, it's something that's been in the works for a long time. It's in the city's vision, which happened ten, ten, eleven years ago. What we're doing today, and what we've been doing for the last five years, a good five years, is nothing but city vision. Wastewater treatment is a big issue with, with everything, one of my big things I look at. Infrastructure, the roads, bikeable, walkable, you name it, it's all in that vision, and that's what we're doing. This is in the vision, and it was called a gathering place of many uses, or whatever how that was worded, this is what that is. You might think it was just something that we just dreamed up last couple of years ago, no, this was thought of ten and eleven years ago, by the people, not by the council. Mr. Morrison, you weren't at the visionings. If you were there, you'd understand, this is what the people spoke then. Now, these people that are here, there's a lot of people out here that were here at the vision, there, there's still several, I recognize some faces. Y'all know, this was the vision, it isn't our idea, this was the people of this town that spoke back then. They wanted better restaurants, they wanted better building, they wanted better life, things of life, they want a walkable, bikeable community, they want a town center, we're working on that town center as hard as we can work on it, it'll be a reality one day, I might not be here to see it, but it'll be reality. And I'm gonna try to make that thing happen, and I've been trying to make it happen, we've been working hard to make that town center happen, but it just isn't quite there yet, but it's getting close, I can guarantee you that. And I hope it, one day it does happen, 'cause that's what the people wanted ten years ago. Now, we got new people in town, some of you people may be fairly new, I don't know, but we're working on what was spoken ten years ago. If you got new ideas, come bring them to us, and we'll put it in a vision, we'll make a new vision if we have to, two thousand twenty or twenty, whatever, twenty-one, whatever we're gonna make it. But, believe me, this ain't, this isn't something the council just dreamed up, this is a vision that was brought to us ten years ago, and it's happening. And the one gentleman said that was, this town was too diverse, too, too old, well, the, the one gentleman spoke very highly about it at the Gustavo's brainstorm, or brainstorming meeting, he said, finally, we got a place where we get to go to. And that was one of the elders.
This time it's not me.
Oh, I'm talking too long? But anyway, I just would like to, I would like to thank everybody, I don't, I, I know you, everybody has their opinion about what we're doing, but we're doing what the majority of the people asked for ten years ago.
Okay.
And it's all in the writing, and it's all in history, some of it's in this book about the dots that are on the pictures and whatever, but that was what we did, and that's what this city is following. So, we're gonna move on, anybody doesn't have any, I think we're through with public discussion.
I'd like to make a motion.
We have another card?
Oh.
Or? Is this for Ted? Item Ted? Peggy Green?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm Peggy Green, I live at two nineteen Longfront Road, I've lived in this city off and on since nineteen, probably sixty-four. For a brief time, I went to Houston with my job and came back. I've seen this city, in its good times and its bad times. Right now, I, where I live right now is not a good time, because of all the overbuilding and all the things that you, you are applauding tonight, especially with the hotels that are being built, we're being flooded. The, behind us, the vision of the city has fallen flat, because they filled in the wetlands, they built the big condo facilities behind us, and so now we flood. They promised us when they built that, that the flooding would stay on their side, it does not. It floods our yard and it gets worse, every time it rains, it gets worse and worse. I was told by one of the council members, I should plant plants that soak up water. If you will tell me what plants soak up water, I will be more than happy to go buy some and plant them. But, I don't like everybody picking on Mr. Morrison, he is one of the few on the council that will listen to us. He asks our opinion and he listens to us. And so I, I, I just can't sit here and hear the rude expressions that have been made at that young man, who is trying to do a good job in this city.
Might I ask you for a minute, are you gonna speak about?
I am for that multiple facility, but I asked the last time in this meeting about how much it was gonna cost, nobody would tell me anything about what the cost was gonna be. I said, which building is going to be the most expensive building? Well, do you want us to build the cheapest building? No, I don't want the cheapest building, I want, I want the least expensive, and with the best products that you have.
We'll find that out when we get the design, you have to, you have to.
You've got the design, you already got it, it's up there.
That's just.
It's the glass building, and we live in hurricane's area.
Okay.
So, I'm just asking.
Mrs. Green?
We're here.
We'd love, if, if you come into my office tomorrow, I'll spend all day with you and we'll talk about this. That's a, that's a promise.
Do you live in the city?
No, I don't.
Okay. People who live in the city make decisions, who don't live in this city, make decisions about this city, and then we find out later about it.
Okay, good.
But I, I am all for it.
Peggy, Mrs. Green, I'm your neighbor, and you've never spoken to me about anything.
That's because you don't speak to anybody in the neighborhood.
Really?
Yeah.
Really?
I wave at you, and you are walking your dog, and I say, hi, Josh, and you just keep on walking your dog.
That's because most of the people on our street drive down the middle, and I'm trying to keep my dog safe, we've discussed that at Friday Fest.
I know.
So you agree with me?
I know, we have a very small street.
Our street is the same size as every street in Cape Canaveral.
No, no, listen, I know, I'm, I'm probably not making much sense, because I've gotten so angry at the way they've treated Wes tonight, that I'm just, I'm losing my.
You're not angry because the way he treated us?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, because he's, let me, he's asking questions, I ask him. He's asking questions, I asked him.
Well, he was telling us we don't care, and that bothered me very bad, so.
Gustavo knows, I love him, and I love what he's doing with my great-grandchildren.
We love you too, so you have a good evening, good night.
Well, you have a good evening, sir.
Right, all right, okay, bye-bye, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion. Can we move on?
I just, you got your kind of response, I'd like to just make my final comments, and I think this is fair enough. The magnitude of this six point two million dollars deserved a mailer, we heard that Dave Dickey here is willing to spend all day with you, Ms. Green, I'm just, I don't think that's the highest and best use of your time, that's an administrative decision for David, I'm saying spend five thousand dollars and notify the people. The abutter who's gonna be the mostly impacted had no idea about it, no one in his community, we gotta stop making excuses as a city and say, hey, we put it up, you didn't hear about it, we've gotta go outbound and reach people on six point two million dollar decisions. Number two, is that, when you make the comment that I need to go do something else, because I want to involve the public.
No, when you start tearing me down, that's when I tell you, you can leave, 'cause I'm not gonna be taking that, I won't take that abuse publicly or privately from you, when you start telling me that I don't care, and you slamming this council, and you, you're gonna hear from me whether you want to hear or not. Because you're gonna tell me that I don't care? I've cared a hell of a lot more about this city than you'll ever dream of caring, buddy. Believe it.
I'd like to make a motion.
I've got some twenty-something years on this board, doing nothing but working my butt off for this city, eighteen years as a volunteer firefighter, I could go on for a long time, don't tell me I don't care. You've lost all my respect, dude.
Excuse me, it's time to make a motion.
No more.
It's time to make a motion.
Well, you can just say what you want to say.
I'd like to make a motion, please.
I don't think that's how that, this works.
Excuse me, I think that we've had enough discussion.
We've had enough discussion, we're through.
We have enough discussion, do you hear what you don't like to hear?
No.
And that's why we don't like workshops.
I'm not gonna listen to you, tell me, I don't care.
You don't like workshops, because you don't like public opinion.
We've already heard all the.
Run it, run it through, and my final comment is.
I'd like to make a motion, please.
Involve the public, if we're not willing to spend five thousand dollars.
I'm not going there, go ahead and make a motion, Angela, go ahead and make a motion.
This is how they work.
I'd like to make a motion.
Once again, he said we do not care, that is not true.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the new multi-generational facility and culture arts preservation and enrichment center design, thank you.
Embarrassing.
Yeah, it is, you are embarrassing.
Yes.
Go ahead, we heard you, Angela.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Rocky, you want to say something?
Well, I, I was gonna ask for a closing debate and move to the previous question, but she got ahead of me.
Thank you.
But if you're looking for a second, for a vote on this, I would second her motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Again.
Councilmember Randalls?
For the motion.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Okay, number, number eleven is the community survey, which we have got out to the survey, or to the city, we will get it out when, on twenty-fifth of June, I believe it was, will go out, if this passes tonight. I would like to go through the council, you've all had the opportunity to look and see what its questions were, what it's all about, dislikes, likes, weaknesses, and so forth.
Mr. Mayor, if I may see if I can help move this along a little bit, staff has received some detailed ideas from Councilmember Morrison, and what I would like to suggest is, and I'm being very candid here, there are some really good suggestions that I think we can embrace and improve upon the survey questions, and there are some other areas that I think Josh and or I or both need to talk with Councilmember Morrison on, but I think what we're saying is, if other council members don't have any particular questions or concerns or additions, I would like you to approve it, and with the understanding that staff will work its way through the ideas expressed by Councilmember Morrison, but we do not embrace all of its ideas and suggestions. But we, there are a number that we think would be totally appropriate, and something we should do, so, Councilmember Morrison, if you're reasonable. So, Councilmember Morrison, if you're reasonably comfortable with that, then I think we can, we, we can get pretty close to where we all need to be in, in this meeting tonight.
They were just suggestions. Josh has done, the staff's done an excellent job. Suggestions are suggestions. I just wanted to give my best on that and give you as much feedback as I possibly could. I actually circled it around and my wife and some people helped out with that as well. One thing that I'd like to just say is, um, do we have a goal? Just a goal, and it doesn't need to be denied on outcome. What's a successful survey? Is it 10% of the population? Um, because I think that's important and, and if we could set a goal, that would be great.
Let me ask you this, what happens if we don't achieve the goal?
What kind of goal would you like to set?
Yeah.
Yeah, what, just, uh, if we, if we send a survey out and five people fill it out and we go, "Here's the five."
Yeah.
Are you talking about goals as far as the amount of people that we, I thought you were talking about what, what the survey was.
No, the goal on-
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
I, I, I think if we can do the random sample calculation, we'd find that probably a reasonable sample size for 10,000 people might be on the order of maybe four or 500. I, I don't know offhand.
Historically, it's been 400 through the, from 2006.
That's what's been used before in the city, yes.
Yeah, the most has been 487.
Yeah, and, and so I think in that general range and, and I think, you know, we have some concerns to address. No, no voting twice and there'll be some tracking of IP addresses and those kinds of things to keep it legit. And we will do the card mailer to encourage people to participate and, and, and the main, you know, and really work the community as much as we can to get their input. I just don't know where we're going to end up, but I can promise we're going to give it our best shot to get the involvement and get the ideas. And, and this is the first time and I think as, as time goes forward, I, I think this is something we should do more of and our history has been about every three or four, five years. I think every year or every other year, uh, really doing that in addition to the other reach outs that we do should give us a pretty good sense of feeling and, uh, you know, it, that's that.
Mayor, if I can take a moment, maybe bring us up to date, just a little input for about two minutes. Uh, our city has done surveys for many, many years. The first one I had in my hand is University of Central Florida. It was Cape Canaveral Community Survey Executive Summary of Denver, Wright and Janaski in June of 2006. And, uh, and the agenda is that, uh, whitening shop in Cape Canaveral, when, when do you shop, things like that? What do you like about it, what don't you like? That's the first one that, that I had pulled out of my garage. The second one, uh, looking on the agenda was in 2009, we hired the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, which is seven counties or in Orlando. And they sent a team over here, fifteen member steering committee was formed, uh, of the volunteers here. I see a couple's in the audience now who's on that steering committee. Stakeholders and advisors. They started the community conversation. We met in the Radisson for about seven or eight months, I'd have to look at dates. We looked at the lights, what did people like about the county, the city, what did they dislike? Lack of a town center, no beef for dogs, on and on. We looked at the strengths, the weaknesses, opportunities and the threats. And we come up with a, some that you may see, it's in Vision Cape Canaveral. It says that the main five points was that the residents that participate, we had as many as 160 in the convention center at Radisson. Walkable shaded streets and street trees, open shorelines and rivers. And aesthetically and architecturally unique style. Are you reading where I'm at? I'm on page four of the seven. Of, of the agenda, I'm sorry, page four of the seven of the agenda. I'm just wearing it in reading. Uh, they wanted safe designs for bikers and pedestrians. Up the top there is, just have to read the book I have and I'm reading from. They wanted reuse or development ideas for underutilized or blighted areas. And on September the 22nd, they unveiled the final Cape Canaveral vision statement. We gave children, or gave adults portable cameras disposable, they could go wherever they wanted throughout the United States, take pictures of things they liked and things that they didn't like. And we posted something like 1,100 photos on the wall of the Radisson Convention Center. And people got dots, red, blue, green, yellow, indicating desires. They went around, it's all in here. Uh, they put different dots on what they liked according to if they didn't like it. They didn't want a high-rise 22-story building in Miami and that got a red dot. Got more red dots than anything. Uh, in any event, that was it. Then, in 2009, the end, they come up with something you may see frequently, it's called the vision statement. That is simply five items that we envision, a bikeable, walkable Cape Canaveral, a network of complete streets. We envision welcoming community entrances, an engaged and compassionate community that removes or transforms blighted and unfinished buildings, you can grab that. We envision open shorelines and rivers, uh, public including amenities. That's on the front page of your website, right there, every, every time. That was, uh, in 2015. 2016, we hired a professional, I have to get the name of what they were, professional, what was it?
Prismatic and community branding.
A professional branding company, Prismatic, was out of Orlando. They came over and they did the surveys, met every place from the Beer Garden or wherever and asked people what they like, what they don't like, what would you like to see the city become? They prepared a very large book on this and it's available, you can certainly have mine. So, we do ask, then in 2016, the community development, uh, has been able to see the city events. They started community brainstorms, which is some time ago, which you may only get 15 people or 10 people, whoever's convenient to come to them. Even if you're standing out in the rain at, uh, Friday Fest taking notes, people telling you, "I don't like the rain." Well, okay. But, uh, that was, that was 2016. In 2018, we had the strategic planning event and that's these books right here. City council come up with what we wanted to do. This is another survey that we took, all the attachment. And, uh, the one we're doing now is, uh, Attachment Six. And that is the community survey that we have in front of us for tonight. There's some 60 questions and, Mayor, if you let me have another 30 seconds, I'll go on about this. There's some, I don't know who made all these questions, but it asks everything that people would want to know except did you brush your teeth after your last meal or something? It ha, it has a section on demographics, people respond to. There's a section on city amenities or opportunities, how do you feel, what do you like, all those questions. There's another section on civic, environmental and aesthetics. Very good for you to ask about how satisfied you are with the environmental health of the lagoon. There's a section on development trends. How important is it that blighted areas in the Cape Canaveral be developed? One example. There's a section on city services. Indicates your level of satisfaction from everything from fire service to storm water to waste removal to city of cocoa water. Section on community program, progress, I'm sorry, city progress, community progress. Would you rate the progress in this city over the past 10 years in each of the areas below? Really get your input about three, six, nine, 12, 15 items. Section on information about the city. Lots of good questions there. How often do you attend city meetings? Uh, have you ever been on the city website? Section on community involvement, have you ever been to some of the arts class for the children? Uh, section on additional feedback, a blank where you write in whatever you want. Final question is that you made it, thanks so much for making the time to complete the survey. We really appreciate it. Your input is one of the most valuable resources we have and it helps us make a space between a wonderful place to live and visit, keep an eye on the weekly update and our social medias. And this, the results of this survey will be delivered. Uh, these are gonna be, tell us where.
Are you asking me where the survey's gonna be?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the survey's gonna be housed on the city webpage. It'll be everywhere, it'll be on the news, it'll be on the top five. It'll be on cityofcapecanaveral.org/survey if the council approves it. From there, it'll be mailed, be a postcard to every house. I think my current stat, 7,922.
But this is important, we do hear the surveys and we try to follow them. Now, some people, uh, sometimes get involved in, and you may hear later on some of the agenda items, that, uh, in years past, and Bob and I have been here for a little while, not that that means anything 'cause things change. But we were staying here till 1 o'clock in the morning where there's no place to get coffee after, except the Waffle House. Everything had closed. And we're talking about, how many peacocks is too many? We also discussed how many, uh, cats can be in a cat colony. And it, folks, that gets, wasn't nobody in the audience, I'll tell you that at 2:00 in the morning. They really didn't care how, how many cats, feral cats is in, can be in a group. But, we've tried that, if, I think we'd certainly go back to a workshop. But what we did was, uh, labored endlessly with the people leaving when they'd seen enough of the show. And, uh, it, it, we've been that workshop, right? So, Mayor, thank you for letting me talk about this. We do do surveys and we listen to them. Those of you that were in Radisson have seen the envision, you've seen the change in the past 20 years where there's A1, North Atlantic, where there's Ridgewood. Uh, little by little, we're gaining ground. Your case, Mayor.
Well, it's council's. Move down this way. Well, Angela, did you, did you wanna say anything or did you say something?
I didn't say anything about this, but I mean, I think it's a good idea and I approve it. I'm ready to move on and make a motion that we approve this survey and send it forth.
Okay.
And we will work with Councilmember Morrison on these questions.
Thank you.
I agree, move on, looks good to me.
Are you ready to second it?
I don't have anything to say other than-
Is there a second?
I wanna applaud whoever put it together, asked a lot of good questions and-
Dr. Tom Fredo.
Is that who it was?
Dr. Tom did it?
Wait a minute.
You didn't have anything to do with it, I can see that.
This is not his first rodeo, then.
No, it was just, it was, there was a lot of information in it and I-
That would be you.
I hope we get more than 400-plus responses back. If we mail everybody one of these, you are gonna direct mail everything, correct?
Correct.
It will be direct mailed and on all the social media, so, uh, I hope you got your mailbox up.
Postcard, it will be a postcard to save on the cost of that. So, instead of 5,000, it'll be more like 4,000. But it's gonna cost $4,000 to mail a postcard to everyone in the city to go to the website.
And that can include the library or wherever.
It'll, yeah, library, every marquee, LEDs, Nixle, we'll send a text message to everyone who is listed on the Nixle messaging system, which out of 10,000 people is currently around 187. So, we have outlets out there that people just have to sign up for.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
If they don't go to the library or wherever.
Everywhere, every park, marquee.
If you don't wanna spend your direction, just do a mailing to the board of directors of, if it's a big condo association, they can distribute your office.
Well, that, I don't know how that works.
It's not what I'm hearing on the council tonight.
Then we have somebody that don't get it, would get blamed. I, I'd rather just-
But, for other things-
Yeah, well, I, I appreciate your thought. I mean, save a nickel, we save a nickel, but that, that's, uh, you know, you know how sometimes that works. But thanks, Josh, for your efforts especially. Uh, I know you had a lot to do with this, I can tell just by some of the questions.
Yes, it is his project.
I can tell by the questions.
But it was well put together. Okay, um, we got a motion to approve?
Second.
I had moved it.
Yeah, I, I was just thinking, did you second it, Rock, or is?
I didn't, but I certain who will move for a second to that motion.
We have a motion by Mrs. Raymond and seconded by Mr. Randalls.
Okay.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Randalls?
For the motion.
Councilmember Raymond?
For.
Okay, item number 12 was-
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn and we'll move to 13. This is a discussion to consider the exemption of preempting permitting fees in the city ordinance is related to the installation of solar power. Discussion. We have no cards, so this is up on the dais.
I, I submitted this so I can just lead and kinda get everyone caught up. If you had a chance to read the summary, that really encompasses it. Um, solar, uh, recently the county, they waived the permitting fees and I thought about hearing Cape Canaveral. Staff helped me understand that a couple of, uh, projects came through last year, residential. Um, spoke with staff, doesn't seem like this is gonna be a big lift. Uh, you know, no major urgency on this matter other than, uh, if we can get it across the line before the, you know, end of the year, that would be great to incentivize. A lot of folks are putting new, um, roofs on their house due to the hurricane. It's a great time to go ahead and, and go solar and there's federal incentives, uh, that will be expiring and there's some state incentives as well. And now we at the city level can make it as easy as possible for someone to embrace renewable energy and in return help lower their electricity costs, get some money back. Uh, city will take a revenue hit, talked with the city manager about that. But doesn't seem like, um, it's gonna be a major issue today, however, um, with, you know, property tax exemptions coming, every little bit counts and I certainly am sensitive to that. However, it's a simple proposal to say, uh, by removing financial barriers to incentivize people to go solar, to, uh, waive the permits. Um, with that, I think a resolution would be, but I'll yield to kind of the attorney and staff and Dave Dickey and see what they recommend. Just wanted to get the thoughts from the council before staff spend any time on this.
Are you asking the attorney to do something or?
No, just, just get the feedback from the council and see if we think it's a good idea and if-
I didn't know if you were directing it.
I, I, I just was wondering, uh, Councilman Morrison, are you in the solar business and would this in any way benefit your business? Because I see maybe a conflict of interest here. Uh, please help me, attorney. Is there a conflict of interest here, bringing this up?
Well, I don't know in this particular case, but in, in, under Florida law, um, as you, as the council should be aware, if a matter inurges to the special private gain of, of your, of you or any family member or business associate or employer, uh, that could potentially be grounds for declaring a voting conflict of interest to recuse oneself. So, the question is whether or not there's a financial benefit to you or your employer, et cetera. So, I have not discussed this item with Mr. Morrison. I don't know if there's any issue with him. Um, that's something that typically individual council members will bring up ahead of time and consult with me if they feel like there potentially could be a voting conflict.
My comment on that great question, um, in the event that we have that discussion and there is a conflict of interest, I would remove myself. Um, I'm not an attorney and the way I understand state law, there is no conflict. However, uh, you know, we, our projects are in Massachusetts, this would benefit the residents. But I certainly wouldn't put myself in a position to do that, so excellent, thank you.
Do you deal with any companies in Florida is my question.
I'll, I'll speak with the attorney.
It's a simple yes or no question, do you deal with companies in Florida?
Do I deal, do I deal with companies in Florida?
You know what deal means, Mr. Morrison.
Um, no, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't, we're in the Massachusetts market. Um, yes, there's, I know, I'm in the industry and of course I know, do I know companies in Florida? Yes. Um, as of today, uh, yeah, we're not, it's a very difficult answer, so, that's it, it's, um... It's, and, and just to educate, from, if, as a, we're not a solar, if you're installing solar panels, you don't benefit from a permit fee waiver. I mean, how, do you understand what I'm saying? There's no, there's no revenue stream in there. The, the consumer pays the permit fee, we don't pay the permit fees. Um, so you as the residents or the commercial business pay. So, if I went solar on my roof, I would benefit and someone else would, but my business doesn't benefit from it. Does that make sense? Permit fees aren't paid by the company. Permit fees are paid by the consumer.
You're very intelligent, you understand the question I asked you and it's pretty simple. And you're trying to twist it around, Mr. Morrison. I asked you a simple question, I just, I think I need to answer.
Do I deal with comp, what do you mean by deal? Wow.
Mr. Morrison, you're in the business of dealing with solar energy, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
It was a simple question, do you deal, does your company deal with companies in Florida?
Yes, sir.
That's all I'm asking you.
The way I understand you define deal, yes. As, do I interact, compare, trade, talk? Yes. And in the event that there was any conflict, I would happily remove myself from this, so...
Only reason I ask that is because you said your company basically dealt with Massachusetts, and now I'm finding out that you deal, you do deal in Florida. That's the only question I was concerned with, only answer I was leaning toward. Thank you.
Down on the other end, anybody have anything? Rocky? Angela?
I think I had my question answered, thank you.
Rocky? You have nothing?
I see, in my personal situation, I could see a conflict if I was selling wagons and the city needed to buy a wagon. Pretty clear to me.
I don't have anything to say other than solar, I'm familiar with it, I work with people that put them in, I hook them up, I be around them, I see them come and I go. And they, they're a very expensive commodity to get into, and for the return, yeah, there's some people get a good return, and then there's some people that they don't get any return at all because it's gone in a couple of years. They don't last, they're, they're, they're very, I would say susceptible to this atmosphere in this county or this country, especially on the seaside. Florida Power and Light is into solar so big right now that probably none of you in the room know what involvement they're really in. They're putting in 35 megawatt solar fields all over this state of Florida. They got 22 in operation, they got 20 more coming up. They got one in Palm Bay that are, the Bayside area or whatever, Barefoot Bay. It'll blow you away, that thing's a mile long, it'll probably a half a mile wide, and nothing but solar panel after solar panel as far as you can see. And they're, they're the ones that are going to probably be the most helping in endeavor of solar in my book. I personally, I have nothing against somebody having a solar panel on their roof or whatever, but I don't think it's viable as far as economics. I never have seen a, a solar, a person that has a solar field on their roof that probably is happy after a while with it up there because it does create leaks in the roofs and so forth and so on. I've disconnected as many as I've hooked up probably, so it's a 50/50 deal with me. And the other thing about, what I wanted to say about this is waiving the permit fees, you're asking for staff to go out and spend time for free, and I, I'm not going to do that. Staff has to go and inspect these things, just like they do my jobs. I change services on the house and what things that I do, I get inspected. I pay the permit fees, yes. Mr. Morrison's right, the customer pays in the end because the contractor don't pay it. We charge you, we pay the, pay the city. The only thing I do, I lose on permits because I don't charge, like a lot of other guys, for time to go sit there and get it. I don't charge my customers that. I just, I wait till I got a couple of them, then I go down and make a nice pleasurable drive to get out of, get away from all the everyday humbub. But anyway, I will not support waiving permit fees for anything that we have to spend our staff time to go and look at it. That's staff time, that's all it pays for, and it really don't even pay for staff time. So you're asking for us to let staff work for free, and I'm not going to do that, just to put it in a nutshell. You're asking for staff to work for nothing, and I will not support it. So we can move on with a motion, or if you want to discuss it some more, feel free to take a discussion.
Yeah, well, thank you all for sharing. If, it, there are some, maybe some confusion, but I mean, to say that, that me as a solar developer, if I would benefit is no more than saying that, you know, you as an electrician would benefit is no more than, it's not about that. It's about seeing that we have an opportunity, sustainability is in our vision statement over and over again. And if we want to lead by example, and you guys are going to stonewall this on revenue, when I met with the, the experts, you told me to rely on staff, and I did, and our staff said this is not going to be a significant impact, and I worked hard to get these numbers. So the total numbers is, we're going to be sending about $840 a year, and if we, and it's, and I'm really suggesting a one-year program to expire to embrace sustainability. County, if you want some precedent, voted 5-0 for it. Bipartisan, it polls very high, the people like solar. We need to make it as easy as possible. And in a one-year program, I don't think we're going to have a lot of financial damage. If our finance director, more importantly, our city manager thinks it was, he would have told me, he has no problem being candid with me, and he didn't feel like it was going to be a major issue, so...
It's not a major issue, but I just think it's an issue where, well, okay, I would like to have all plumbing fees and electrical fees waived then. Let's make it real easy on everybody.
When you compare the numbers to that...
No, no, let's don't go with any comparisons, let's just go...
I like the numbers.
Apples are for apples. Apples are apples.
Okay, that's okay.
So you're asking for, you're asking for us to waive fees for staff time?
$840 was there for the year last year?
I don't care if it's for $5.
Well...
It's staff time.
We need...
And you're, you're always pressing the, the thing about staff time and cost.
Okay.
My, my thing in a nutshell.
I understood that this is just a discussion, we aren't making motions on this whatsoever, it was just a discussion. Okay? Thank you. It's a discussion. It's a discussion.
And if I understand, agreed, it sounds like Mayor Hoag would be against it. I'd like to just hear the other council, I mean, do you think it's a good, if we can get consensus, staff can do some research, if it comes back to Councilmember Raymond's point. I think maybe that you could get comfortable with the numbers, Mayor Hoag, and take another look at it. Dave Dickey said he could, with Attorney Garganese, could get something going pretty quickly. I don't see a lot of staff time, just insignificant to draft a resolution, so if the other council has any other concerns, I'd like to hear those, but I'm for bringing it back on the next council meeting to take it to an official vote, and that would allow this council to have enough time to really think about it. I think it's a good thing for our community, and I think that Cape Canaveral can really take a lead in sustainability.
Last question personally, is your solar company involved any way with the PACE, which is the company that loans the money for the homeowners to buy this product?
No, sir.
Because that certainly would be a conflict of interest in my part if there's PACE, several PACES, the finance company that loans money to buy solar. Okay, you're not...
Well, just one, on the conflict of interest, just so everyone understands, when a council member's under a conflict of interest, it's a very simple solution under state law, I remove myself from the vote, that's it. And in fact, the law doesn't require me to do, do this, I'm going to leave the room. I don't want to even have a face, I don't have, I am not going to sit up here and, I'm going to get out of here, let this council decide to help you to lower permit fees. So conflict of interest happens all the time, and in fact, some professions have so many conflicts of interest, they can't vote on anything. That's not the case here, so it's not, to not support something over a conflict of interest, I don't think is a good reason to not support something.
They were really talking about a lot of sustainability as you're talking about, I'd rather see something bigger than that. If you want to give away staff time, then let's talk about something bigger than $800. $800, yeah, it's not a lot of money, but to a lot of other people, yeah, it may be a lot of money. Maybe to you it's not a lot of money, it's not a lot to me, but yeah, I would like to have somebody just give me $800. But my point is, is staff time, it takes staff time to go out and inspect this stuff. I don't care how sustainability you want to get, it takes staff time to go inspect it. And that's, you, you don't believe that they go out and inspect it? Or what? You made a comment.
I just think we went a little long. I think the fact that I brought this up will really determine its success.
No, it ain't, no reason, no. I had, I didn't know who brought this up. I didn't even care who brought it up. When I first read it, somebody wants to waive permit fees, we'll waive permit fees for certain things, yeah, which I pro, obligated one time for hurricane fees. Yeah, I'm all for helping the people, but when it's something that's just at a whim, just to waive fees, I'm not for waiving fees.
There's a reason to waive these, we only had two last year.
Well, what's the big reason to waive them? If it's such a big...
To help, yeah.
Sustainability, to me, $800 don't even come to a drop of the bucket in sustainability. Let's talk, let's talk millions, that's sustainability.
Yeah, I think you're missing the point, but it's...
We're not to that point yet with solar, and I don't really, truthfully, I really don't think solar is going to ever get there through, through the, through the personal.
If it's a drop in the bucket and you're voting for it against, I don't understand your, there's a bit of a contradiction.
I'm not voting against it, I'm voting against waiving fees for something that's going to cost the city. I'm not voting against solar, I don't care about solar. I don't, I don't have any desire to have solar on my house, or I'd have had it years ago. I was the first guy to have an on all-house generator in the facility in the city. Nobody ever even heard of one. So I have a full-house generator, I don't have to worry about power outages. Again, I paid dearly for it, it was sustainability, it's been there 15 years, and I probably paid that much in permits to put it all in, plus 10 times the fees of the permits. So, I mean, we're talking about $800, and that to me is not sustainability. The idea is, the cost has no factor, has no factor as far as your involvement, I could care, you could vote for it because I don't think you're really going to make anything off of it because it don't happen. It's not happening. But my point is, you're asking for fees to be waived for staff time.
Okay.
And I just don't support that. I support what you're trying to do, solar, I don't have a problem with it, I don't care for it, but that's not my reasoning. My reason is staff time is costing money, and you're asking us to say, well, we'll waive all those fees. I don't care what the county done, they're in financial problems, this city's not.
Your city, your city manager said that the finance, the one you trust with the money, said that this should not be a problem, so...
Shouldn't be, I hope it wouldn't be. I hope $800 isn't a problem in the city.
No, no, it's staff time, staff time. So what you're voting, he said it shouldn't be a problem.
I think it is.
Please correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't want to put Mr. Green on that spot, this isn't Mr. Green's argument.
I don't know what...
We're not asking Mr. Green to vote on this. Mr. Green told you something, that's Mr. Green told you.
I think I'm allowed to ask the city manager a question.
I don't think you should put him on the spot.
No, no.
And question him as it happened.
No.
I'm just saying, this is the council's vote, it's nothing to do, nothing to do with Mr. Green. My, my thinking is...
So you're, well, just to be clear, you're stopping me from asking Mr. Green a question?
Go ahead and ask Mr. Green, all you want, ask him if you want to.
Thank, thank, I don't...
Go ahead, I don't care.
From our discussion...
I think you're putting him on the spot personally.
From our discussion, did you and I talk about staff time?
Yes, sir, we did. And I did indicate to you that I didn't see that that level of involvement was a problem financially.
Thank you very much. And Dave Dickey, did you feel like that this was going to be a major problem from a staff cost perspective?
I'm not sure I spoke to that issue, but I do recall telling you that I thought it would be fairly straightforward to implement something like that.
Okay, got it. And attorney, Anthony, you were there with us as well, and I think that you didn't see major issues from a, just a discussion...
Yeah, from a legal perspective, the city council would have to adopt a resolution to waive the fees and declare that there's a legitimate government purpose for doing so. So that's the legal requirement.
And, and I think our finance director, John Delaio, took, looked at the finance impacts, and I don't think that he, maybe that wasn't the goal of that, and we haven't done a deep dive. Point is, is I went to staff and did the time.
I'm glad you did. But let me tell you one thing...
You and I never had that discussions, so just...
Fair, fair.
But I'd like to, I'd like to clarify, I'd like to clarify one thing you said, I think it's a major issue. It isn't a major issue with me. You don't listen very well. You want to hear what you want to hear, and you say what you want to say, but you don't want to listen to what other people have to say on this council. We all have a voice, just like you, like you want to have a voice over everybody else and don't care about our voice, but I'm telling you, I don't have an issue with what you're trying to do, I don't have an issue with $800 or whatever it was, because if we really have to worry about that, I would really be worried about voting for a $6 million facility. But I'm, my concern and my thing is that I will go down till I fight till I'm dead, that I will not give up staff time free.
Okay, you, you've made your point very clear. I'd like to hear for the rest of the council.
Mayor, can I interrupt long enough and, and ask the lady who's standing with the card that you have next, she's a plumber, she'd like to do away with plumbing fees too.
Well, that's what I say, let's just do away with all fees. You're, you're opening a Pandora's box is what you're going to do. I don't agree with it, so, did you want to speak?
Yes, sir.
She's not really a plumber, Mayor.
I don't know. Come on up to the microphone. You have to fill out a card though, if you would, for...
She did.
Oh, did you put it here? Maybe it's her.
Yeah, the, the hour is late.
Yeah, I know.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. My name is Renee Parker, I'm a very new resident here, I've been here about a month. I live at 108 Joe Place, just down the street.
Can you get a little closer for that microphone for us old people?
Okay, I try to do the sustainable thing in biking here, but for sake of time, I did park my car in the electric vehicle plug-in station, so that was the only space available. So I apologize if anyone has a electric vehicle. I represent a different county, I work for a different county, but part of my job is petroleum, air, sustainability and energy. And as part of that, we've been in a movement in the state of Florida in opening up the solar market to all residents, including those in low income. One of the things that my county is looking forward to doing is being a Soul Smart designated community by the Department of Energy. And part of that, you look at your strategies and see what you can do to incentivize residents, all income brackets, and part of that might be reducing permit fees. Several counties have done that, several municipalities have done that, but that is completely a board decision based on your finances and how it impacts your county. One of the other things that have been done successfully is streamlining permitting. So when there's a green resource that is coming through or a sustainable product, you can put that at the top of the pile for making it a fast-track permit. The other things that we've seen is the price of, cost of solar has gone down. In our county, we have actually installed 27% of the installed solar capacity in the state of Florida. That represents 748 kilowatt hours of installed solar capacity. That's only 188 homes, that's how much it represents. So the solar is growing in the market, but we need council and city councils' help in doing that. The price of solar in co-op markets is about $2.50 a watt, and we're seeing that come down in price. Having waived permit fees actually helps for low-income houses. So it gives you more points as well when you're going for a Soul Smart community, it also allows you to go for better grants when you're looking for, trying to find pots of money in order to make a walkable community, a sustainable community. It gives you more points when you're trying to seek grants, especially since I'm excited to hear that I might have a place to go and recreate outside the beach, that's one of the things that, why I moved here. I commute about an hour each way, so I like coming over here to Cape Canaveral. I've been coming here for 14 years and I'm excited to be a resident. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Make a, make a quick suggestion. We've, we've partnered with the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council to do a resiliency slash sustainability plan for the city, and let me throw this out, that we're going to be looking at a number of things on the way, the ways we can make the city more resilient, more sustainable. And rather than, excuse me, Wes, I don't mean it the way it may sound, rather than cherry-pick things at the moment, let's take a look at the overall, like this lady is talking about, let's take a look at the overall program and ways we can incentivize our residents to do certain things. And I think it would be, let's, we'll, those incentives can be in context, and we can come up with a, a plan, and we can look at a number of arrows that we can put in our quiver to deal with this.
And if I may just make one comment for clarification purposes, our building department and planning and zoning processes are SNAP certified, meaning that we meet the criteria for certification here in Brevard County, and that we have best practices implemented. And so we do those kinds of things of prioritization as, as a... And so we do those kinds of things of prioritization as appropriate under that certification that we have. And I think we're up for certification, again, pretty soon, if I'm not...
Yes.
Thank you.
I think all of us are, you know, of course, we want to promote sustainability. And I think that by looking at some of the building designs, by looking at this building, and I think they've done a very good job, but I've also talked to the mayor over there in Courtney, I think, over in Satellite Beach, and they have some interesting things going with sustainability. I also asked immediately after election about possibility of having a sustainability board. But I think that the staff is doing this, and I think naturally, we wanna get in on some of the initiatives, too. Thank you.
Okay, board, what do you wanna do?
Have we done everything?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's time to adjourn.
Unless we have any other body who wants to speak.
So, yep, just thank you all for the discussion item that I submitted. I'm for it. Do we have consensus that we can direct staff, maybe to, I hope permitting fees is a part of a broader pick, that if the cherry pick can fit into a bigger picture, fine. I would hate that the bigger picture got too big, and that this very good piece fell off. And so that's the benefit of kind of separating it. Other than that, thank you for taking a deeper dive, and I think that it'll be a very good thing for our community.
Yeah, I agree. And obviously, staff wouldn't be making those policy decisions on what would fall off or not. It would be a council decision.
So if the council wants to, maybe, hey, staff, take this and expand upon it, can we push that over as an approval? Do we have enough consensus here to make that a, you know, a priority for them to work on when they're ready?
Yeah, it is, I mean, this effort is moving forward, so I think that it's already, it's already in play, and it's already in motion.
And also, it's grant-funded.
Yes, it is all grant-funded, so there's no, no cost to the city. This is a state-funded.
Yes, and you mentioned that we got a grant for that without spending $76,000.
Yes, that's correct, Rocky.
Thank you.
I think the city should move forward with it. I mean, there's a lot of things that can be done besides totally removing permitting for these, for the solar. I'd just like us to do a little bit more in-depth.
Bob, everybody agree? Bring it back later, then. You're gonna be the one working with, okay?
Myself and our new city planner, Brenda Supernot.
Wait, wait a minute. I'm not sure I'm totally clear on what you're saying here. You want us to move forward on solar at this point?
Yeah, I think Dave said you're already working on it. Stay the course, and permitting fees are a part of that, and I'm clearly for it.
Okay, just wanna be sure this dumb old man gets it.
David's gonna take it. All right, is that it? Anybody got anything? Make it real quick, if you wanna say something. We're gonna get out of here at 9 o'clock.
Reports? We didn't have a report last month.
I know, we didn't.
I'd like to say some things.
Go ahead, say it.
All right.
Say it quick.
We've had a very busy couple of months. Rocky and I attended the Florida League of Cities, Space Coast Florida League of Cities, once for Indy Atlantic, and a very interesting one over at Promise Brevard, where the residents there, about 150 of them, actually served the dinner, which was an unbelievable experience. This is Promise Brevard in West Melbourne. And if you have a chance to visit over there, it's for disabled people, and it was just an incredible event. And I just have to mention that, because I think that the charitable contributions for this project, everybody really needs to be proud of this. So I think it's a great thing for Brevard County and for people who have disabled relatives. I'd also like to say that Rocky and I went to the Atlantic Intercoastal Conference, and we went to the event last Friday night in the pouring rain, and that was very interesting, too. It's all about the waterways in our state. So that was very interesting. Those commissioners are appointed by the governor, and I thought that was a very interesting way to network with a lot of different people. One other thing I'd like to say is that Wes and I both attended the Institute for Elected Municipal Officials that covers everything from how to be a good council member, how to have good rapport with your council and with your residents, how to do finances, how to do city planning. This was very good. It's a 16-hour course. This was very interesting. I learned a lot about different personalities, very good. Now, one last thing, and I'm finished. Thank you, Mayor. Last month, I was asked to write a limerick, and this is the limerick that I wrote, and I wanna recite it. There will be more coming. There once was a place called The Cape. The challenge was to get in shape. The meetings are long, but nothing is wrong, 'cause the council has it on tape. I can't top that. Take it, Wes.
Good, thank you for all who spoke up and participated, and I look forward to continuing to work with you, and we have a wonderful staff. And we, it is on tape, and I'm thankful for it. And council, at the end of the day, we're professionals, take my job very seriously, and this council does care. If that was said, it was not meant. It said, "Workshop's allowed to care," and I'd like to use my report for that clarity. And nothing but love over here. We're gonna get through this. Thank you.
I think we all agree that we can disagree. I just wanna thank staff, the city manager, the attorney, everybody that works closely with the city for the hard work they do that often goes unrecognized. And also, to our first responders sitting over there, commanders and community fire department, we do appreciate all you do. Thank you.
I'll pass. I don't have anything, other than thank everybody for being here. And I think it was a well-attended meeting, and I'd like to see them every meeting, and then people will be informed. So show up and tell your friends. We do a lot. I'm sorry? Yeah. They don't ever wanna say anything. Anthony, did you have anything you wanna say?
No, I have a report.
It's a rig, you gotta know.
Talk to me, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Sidebar. Yes, sir.
Nothing? You don't need no money or nothing? You guys are good. Good, good.
I am doing great with what I have, and our community is doing fairly well with following pedestrian laws, so if we just keep encouraging that, we will be a much better community and safer community.
Thank you. Commander Moros.
Great job.
Johnny Cunningham, we wanna hear from Johnny. Nothing?